Good evening. This is called to order the City Council regular meeting. Called to order. Rule call, please, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Greg Newton, Berwin Hanna, Kevin Bash, Mayor Portem, Robin Grendmeyer, Mayor Ted Hoffman.
Yes.
All present.
Are there any speaker cards for closed session?
Yes, Mayor, I have one card. Ronald Mugard.
Good evening, Mr. Mugard. Oh, sorry.
I know you're going into closed session on my case, and I just wanted to add a few things before you go in and hash this thing out. First of all, everything is basically resolved. I made an offer, and you'll be hearing about that a little bit later. The main thing is, you haven't heard both sides. You haven't heard our side of the case. You've only heard what the city attorney has told you. And it's pretty important, I mean, you know, sometimes things don't seem like they're going to be much different, but there is a big difference in one side or the other. So I'd like to have a chance to address you on my side of the case. And the only way that can really happen is if we postpone it for just a little bit, a couple of weeks, and we get this on the next agenda in an open session so I can speak. Or I'm not sure if I could go into closed session and speak about it with you or not. I mean, not this time, but in another, so it would be an open session agenda, is this correct?
Well, only if somebody in the council decides that they want to put it on the agenda.
Right.
The other thing, just just a question, because we had this discussion the last council meeting. Is your attorney still your attorney?
No.
Has there a substitution been filed?
Yes.
Okay, that's new news, okay.
So I would like to address the council on an open session if somebody would be kind enough to put it on the agenda. It wouldn't take a whole long time, but at least you would have both sides of the story before you get a chance to make your decision. And other than that, everything is pretty well in order on my property. And what it cost me up to this point is $50,000 in attorney's fees just to keep the city from placing a, that was my retirement money, and I had to put that up front just to keep the city from placing a receiver on the property. And after that happens, I've seen what happens after a receiver's done. It's pretty much you lose your property. There wouldn't be any way I'd be able to recovered it. So I just threw all my life savings in the pot and figured I'm going to save my house. And up to this point, things have been going fair. We've got an upcoming hearing here on the 28th, and that's a little bit too soon for you to hear my side of the story. If that was postponed for a short period of time, I could voice my side. And so I would appreciate it if somebody would put it on the agenda, or at least make a motion to, and we could get that to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Mugard.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Are there any other cards?
No cards.
Seeing other cards, I will close this session and we recess to closed session. Want to reconvene in public session? Does the attorney have anything from the closed session? That's you, John.
Busy shooting the breeze. The City Council considered those matters listed on the agenda in closed session, and there are no reportable actions.
With that, Berwin, can you leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) the United States of America and the free republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You please remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Michelle Arberg from the Word Faith Fellowship Church.
Hello, thank you for having me here tonight and today. I wanted to share something fun I found with you. I shared some of these at the Day of the Cowboy last year. I found the Cowboy Bible translation. And so I just wanted to read to you Psalm 133:3, "Just like the rain comes from above to fall on thirsty pastures, the Lord will send blessings and eternal life to all his cowboys and cowgirls." And from Romans 8 it says, "I'm certain that neither livin' nor dyin', neither the angels from heaven nor the boogers from the brush, neither the right nows nor the will-bees nor any other force; there ain't no fence, no gate, nor any mountain or problem that will be able to keep us from the love of God that is found in His Son. Lord, we thank you for your love, for your faithfulness, and for your grace. Thank you for a city that is willing to say, 'In God we trust.' Lord, let us not take these words lightly, for as we trust in you, you are always faithful to answer. We thank you for our mayor, our council members, and other leaders that you have called for such a time as this. We thank you for the integrity and the deep commitment they have to this community. Lord, I thank you for all who are gathered here tonight. Lead us. We invoke your presence tonight. We invite you, Lord, to lead. May your presence be felt by all. May the words spoken and any decisions made be for the good of Norco and bring you glory. Lord, bring your people together, strengthen families, build community. And Lord, would you bless this council meeting and bless this city. Horstown, USA. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
All right, now this is the part of the agenda that really we like to do. Kathy Andrews from the Donate to Life is here to accept the proclamation from, or April of 2018. Come on over here, Kathy, you don't have to stand there. All right. This is from the city of Norco. Whereas, proclamation, organ tissue, marrow, and blood donations are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expression of compassion to those in need. And whereas, more than 114,000 individuals nationwide, more than 21,000 in California, are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list, and on average, 20 people die each day while waiting due to the shortage of donated organs. And whereas, the need for donated organs especially urgent in Hispanic and African-American communities. And whereas, more than 600,000 units of blood per year are needed to meet the need in California at any given time. And 6,000 patients are in need of volunteer marrow donors. And a single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidney, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives. Donation of tissues can save and heal the lives of more than 75 others, and a single blood donation can help three people in need. And whereas, millions of lives each year are saved and healed by donors of organs, tissues, marrow, and blood, the spirit of giving and the decision to donate are not restricted by age or mental conditions. Whereas, over 14 million Californians have signed up with the state-authorized Donate Life California Donor Registry to ensure their wishes to be organ and eye tissue donors and honored. Whereas, a Californian can sign up with the Donate to Life California Donor Registry or applying for renewing their driver's license or ID cards at the California Department of Vehicles. Now, therefore, I, Ted Hoffman, Mayor of the city of Norco, on behalf of the City Council in recognition of National Donate Life Month, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2018 as DMV Donate Life California Month, and encourage all Norconians to check yes when applying or renewing their driver's license or ID card or by signing up on their webpage.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. One thing, I've actually been part of this program with people that have gotten tissues or, and I used to help donate blood all the time, and so, thank you. And for everything you guys have done, and I'll put my John Hancock on here, so they haven't done that yet. But again, thank you. Want to say something?
Yes, thank you.
All right.
I'd like to thank the mayor and the rest of the City Council members in the city of Norco for this proclamation for Donate Life Month. And the reason that it's very important to me is, it's my son Tyler, and he was just 18 years old when he passed away, and he was able to donate his bone, skin, vein, and corneas. And so he continues to enhance many people through ACL surgeries, his corneas went to melanofemal that in Massachusetts and Florida. And he was a kid that, he loved life, he loved video games, he loved books, he read from an early age. And so he always was one that wanted to help people, so through signing up and being an organ donor, he was able to help many people. And so, as we all know, yesterday was the first day of spring, and when you think about spring, it is a season of new beginnings, fresh floods bloom, and animals awaken, and the earth seems to come to life again. So saying yes to organ donations like springtime. We are giving people a chance for a new beginning, the chance of hope. So my son gave people hope, and a lot of other people who have said yes to organ donation have given people hope and new life. So I ask you to sign up at the DMV, and I have Cindy Robinson, she works at the DMV. She is someone special to me and very pleasant, so they will help you to sign up. Or you can go to Donate Life California and sign up online like my son did right after he turned 18. And so this proclamation will be proudly displayed at the Donate Life Run and Walk that we have at Cal State Fullerton on April 28. And if anybody wants to come to the Run and Walk, if you're more than happy, sign up online. And it's a day of, we celebrate life. It's not a day of sadness. We celebrate the life that people have gave to help other people. And so I thank again.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, thank you. Appreciate it. And like I said, just make sure you get those little dots on your driver's license and get on the, go to the website too and sign up for the registry. All right, I'm going to ask Bonnie to come on up here from the Norco Horseman Association, and I'd like the rest of my fellow council members, come on down here. I don't do this by myself.
Make them get up.
I know, make them get up. Stretch their legs. Here, Bonnie, you want to stand this side?
I want people to see you, that way you don't see the back of your head there.
Okay. Thank you.
Come on.
Hi, 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 hi. Well, several weeks ago, we had our annual Casino Night, which is our fundraiser to raise money to give scholarships to high school students. And we did meet our goal, so we'll be giving scholarships to high school students this spring. And I have a plaque to present to the City Council to thank them. Individually, they all supported us, and the city did a wonderful job of supporting us. The Parks and Rec staff was wonderful. You guys are gold, so you're a gold sponsor.
Oh, well, thank you. Thank you, Bonnie. I know for all NHA members up here, it's probably one of the best organizations in town to support your ideals, especially preservation of the horsekeeping and large lots, so thank you, Bonnie, very much. All right, thank you, guys. Berwin, you want to grab that for me? Thank you, sir. Eric, you want to turn this over to the boss, or you got it?
I'll start it.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Up here to join me, I'd like to introduce Assistant Sheriff Joe Clary, Captain Daniel Hedge at the Hoopa Valley Station, Sergeant William Davis of the Norco Sheriff's Office, Matt Fautcher of the Norco Sheriff's Office, Jennifer Hall of Central Dispatch, last and certainly not least, Case Agent Darrell Robertson. So the reason we're here tonight is because of an event or an investigation that stemmed from February 19th, and it was a series of threats made against a local college by a local individual. Those threats were posted on Facebook. Deputy Robertson took the call, but Dispatch played a very, very integral part of that. We worked together. So what eventually happened, it was a long day for us. We had a lot going on. We utilized a lot of department resources. We utilized our Hoopa Valley Station Detective Bureau. We utilized all of our Norco set team, which is these two gentlemen here. We utilized Central Dispatch. We utilized our Special Investigation Bureau investigators, which also encompassed the Joint Terrorism Task Force. And the reason I share this is because you see a small group of what the Sheriff's Department is, but we have tremendous amount of resources behind us. So that night, we were successful in locating the suspect. We served a warrant at his residence, and we took him into custody. Fortunately, no one was injured. We did find evidence related to the threats, which included weapons and ammunition. We didn't stop there. The investigation took us to the state of Oregon where there was a second co-conspirator and suspect related to this case. Deputy Robertson, along with members of the Hoopa Valley Station Detective Bureau, flew up to Oregon, and we were able to take that second suspect into custody where he's going through extradition hearing now. The point is, is we had a very, very credible threat, and this could have ended very differently. I'm very, very proud of Deputy Robertson, Deputy Matt Fautcher, Jennifer Hall, and all the support that the Norco Sheriff's Office gets from not only the Hoopa Valley Station, but from the Riverside County Sheriff's Department. In that little office, we probably had close to 20 and 30 people that night. We went for 17, 18 hours straight, Darrell? 18 hours straight. It ended like it should, and nobody was hurt, and we had somebody in custody. So this wouldn't be possible, again, without the tremendous support and assets we get from the Sheriff's Department, but not only that, from the city of Norco, from our City Council. We're very, very proud to be a part of the city of Norco. For over 50 years, we've had a really good relationship that we appreciate very much, and I've worked very, very hard, as well as my predecessors, to make sure that we maintain that proud heritage of law enforcement services to the city of Norco. So on behalf of the Norco Sheriff's Office, I want to thank everybody that was involved in that investigation. I'm very proud to be tan and green, and very proud that we were able to basically eliminate the threat where this could have been a very, very tragic situation. Headlines all over the nation where we see these things go wrong. Fortunately, we got on it early, we reacted early, and we were able to end it successfully. So thank you.
As the commander of the Hoopa Valley Station, I too would like to thank everybody that was involved, including Lieutenant Eric Riddick. He's a little bit modest, but he was there from the minute he received the call until late in the evening. And I could not have a better lieutenant that's commanding the Norco office as the chief of police. I really appreciate your hard work and dedication. And I think it's underscored a little bit, we've read in the newspapers, maybe you still read the newspaper, as well as watching TV, all the incidents that occur over the nation of active shooters, and it seems to be more frequent and more frequent. I'm here to tell you that we mentioned that it was a credible threat. I can tell you right now that it was going to happen. This individual, these individuals, were going to come to our community, and they were going to have a shooting at the local college, like you see on TV. And because of the dedication and the hard work of the Riverside County Sheriff's Department and all the task force, and the assistance from the local college district, we were able to prevent that from happening. And I don't think anybody will ever know how close it came. I think in our career, I've been in law enforcement for 31 years, and we've talked frequently about when we retire, if there's going to be any thoughts or consideration of the lives we've impacted, or what we've actually done throughout our career. I can tell you right now that these individuals need to be very proud that this is probably that one incident in their career, if they don't have any others, that they probably saved many, many lives. And I would like to personally thank them. I am very lucky that I command the Hoopa Valley Station, that I have these wonderful, excellent deputies that work for us, and that we have an outstanding relationship with this community and City Council. If it wasn't for them, we wouldn't have what we have right now. So I'd like to thank everyone myself. Thank you.
Yeah, we can.
You want to write, you want to call out their names?
A lot of them aren't here tonight because there were a lot of people involved, so we have Jennifer Hall representing Dispatch.
Well, and there's Dispatch. And there's nobody from SIB, right?
No, SIB, but we can take it on behalf of SIB.
Those are the other ones from SIB. And then, Captain, these are your folks from Hoopa Station. Yeah, this is all the Dispatch.
All Dispatch.
We're not done yet, because this is the least we can do for the fine job you guys did on this matter. It was interesting, the day, what, two days before, when we met, well, after that, this happened, then we met with the congressman, and Congressman Calvert, and his, when we briefed him on it, his reaction was, "You did what you're supposed to do." And exactly, you did your job, other than what some people have done prior to that. And for that, he was very thankful that, in his district, Riverside County Sheriff, we did, and you did your job. So Eric, to you and your guys and your whole team here and everybody else, I want to thank you. And Captain Hedge, to the Hoopa Valley Sheriff's Station, we appreciate the fine men and women that you send to us and work all the time to help us on that. It's a small token of our appreciation. And Eric, hopefully you'll find a place of pride and honor up there at the, in the organization. We appreciate what you guys have done here and your team. And I know that you guys always send us the best, till Stan, and we appreciate that. Joe, thank you. You want to say anything, Joe?
Anyway, so on behalf of Sheriff Sniff and the entire executive team, we appreciate the recognition that the City Council and the community has given our department. And the entire effort was a team effort, some serious out-of-the-box thinking by members of our department that really helped us identify the people that were going to cause harm here. And it reinforces, especially with the things that have occurred recently in Florida and the other day in Maryland, you cannot be complacent with the threat, however small. You have to take a look at it, and you have to take a look at it with both feet, and that's exactly what happened here. And again, we reinforce the relationship we have with the city, and we've had since 1964, that we work well together and that we are all committed to making sure that this community is as safe as it possibly can be with the resources that are available. And thank you. Again, council, thank you very much. We appreciate it. And on behalf of the department, thank you and the community for basically the feedback and the giving back to the people that are out here trying to keep things safe for everybody. So thank you again.
Yeah, I'm going to give my camera to you. I'm going to give mine to you. You got mine?
Scott?
I do need to make one correction. The county sheriff actually has been taking care of Norco since 1909, and we had constables that they assigned here. I just want to make sure for the record, we haven't signed the contract in 64, but 1909, when the first houses were built here, so just want to make sure you guys know how long you've been here.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to invite up right now Jim and Ann Helfrich. Pleasure to meet you. Ann? Pleasure to meet you. So again, good evening, fellow folks. I'm Scott DeRosa, and I am a member of the Economic Development and Advisory Council. And on behalf of our wonderful City Council here, it's my pleasure to go ahead and honor, or present the honor to Jim and Ann Helfrich from A&amp;J Truck Repair with the Business Appreciation Award tonight. So a few little things about the business here. They're a 30-year-old business, and they've been in Norco for about 15 years. They're employing about 33%, well, 33% of their staff is living in Norco. They started servicing the Norco service vehicles about 2011, so about seven years. And they support the Norco Fair with ad placement in the Fair Book and donate to the Norco High School. So again, it's my pleasure to go ahead and present you folks with the honorary award. That's Mayor House.
Thank you.
And let me go ahead and read from that right now. "The city of Norco hereby honors A&amp;J Truck Repair for the family-operated company's 30-year record of success and for its gracious assistance to the city of Norco, its business community, and its residents. Thank you very much for everything that you do."
Just like to thank the city of Norco for letting us work on their vehicles for so long, and working for the residents. A lot of nice people here. Thank you.
Brian? All right, I go down to City Council business items. City Council Communications reports on regional boards and commissions. Let's start over there. Berwin, you got enough voice?
Oh, yeah. Partly. Anyway, not much this last week. Had our vector meeting, and with the rains that we've had, they're gearing up now to get started on the fighting the mosquitoes for West Nile, which we'll have it again this year, and look like we're going to get more rain. RCTC, they're moving right along with getting full steam ahead on the 15 freeway expansion and everything, and they're still working on, trying to work on some ideas how to relieve the congestion on the 91 freeway. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Robin?
Nothing to report.
Not even on the gala? Come on.
Hoping to make it through Saturday. So Saturday at Nellie Weaver Hall, we will be having the 50th anniversary celebration for Norco High School. Tickets are on sale now on the high school website, and then you can also purchase tickets at the door. And it's going to be wonderful barbecue and a great time, so you should join us.
I'm going to add to that. If you can't make the evening, there is in the morning at Norco High from about 8 o'clock till about noon. The school will be open. They'll be doing some dedications along with the, there'll be students doing tours. If you haven't been to the campus since forever, you'd be surprised what it looks like. you'd be surprised what it looks like. The changes are made. It's not the same campus that opened back in '67. So, things are... Yes, the B building, the library's still there, but it's not the same. So, please come out. The Kiwanis are doing some breakfast pancakes up there. There's going to be some breakfast at a nominal, minimal charge. So, it ought to be a good deal. And then they're going to bury a time capsule later on. And there's a lot of things going on at the high school. Like I said, this is part of Norco's history, the high school. It was the second high school built in the district. And we sure have a lot of proud graduates, which you've got three of them sitting up here. So, please, take your time. And then later on that day, and I'm going to get to Kevin and that, is part of the 50th. We're also having our commemorative celebration up at the Veterans Memorial. Usually, it's done for Vietnam Memorial commemoration. This year, we've included all conflicts, especially for those graduates of Norco High from the mid-'60s all the way to present. So, please, and that'll start at 4:00 with a small ceremony at 4:30, and that'll be at the George Ingalls Veterans Memorial. So, we'll do that. And then you can walk right over to Nellie Weaver and enjoy dinner. All right. Let's slide over there to Greg.
No report.
Thank you.
All right, Kevin, you got some extra time now.
It's hard to believe I graduated 12 years ago from Norco High School.
I know. Me too.
What?
Everybody believes it took you 30 years to get through.
'73, all right. I just have a few things. WRCOG, they're putting together an enterprise center, and it's sort of in the formative stages in which they would create a space for people to come in and develop businesses and have mentorships and things. Mainly, it's focusing on the millennials. So, I had that meeting a couple of days ago. But in that UCR, and I don't yet have all the details, UCR is actually looking at finding ways to do waste material to... They're already doing it in some areas, but this is going to be a whole new horizon that they want to kind of corner the market in Southern California. I don't have all the details yet, but I'm going to hook everybody up who's part of that to see if there's something in it for us. The 50th anniversary, of course, you heard about. I have to give kudos to Park and Rec. The SMAF tournament was fantastic. It was really good. The Southern California Municipal Athletic Federation. The best time was when the School for the Deaf played. They lost by one point, and the referee felt so bad because he fouled out. He knew he called a bad foul on the fourth foul, and the fifth foul was a good foul. And he was like, "Oh, my God." He just fouled out their best player. But literally, they don't speak, and they're just communicating with... I mean, it was amazing. It was absolutely amazing. And then today, Mayor Hoffman, and probably you were there too, right, Robin? In that crowd, the 15 minutes. Really, CAL FIRE and all the different agencies that were involved in that, even though you know it's not real, it's very impactful. And, I mean, all the private companies, the mortuary, all those people involved in that. I mean, it was really... And I really hope, if it could just reach as one kid, but I think we reached a lot more than one kid. And then, somebody deserves an Academy Award. And she did a very, very good job. I was pretty impressed with her. My meeting with the president of Norco College, the Protonics thing. I have no idea where that's really at. But UCR last Thursday had a big to-do that they're talking about $200 million, and then make a presentation and try to bring money to the table. The goal is to develop a mile-and-a-half-long tube with a laser in it. It's still in the early stages. There's a kind of famous professor in Corona that's pushing this thing. I don't know if it has legs yet, but it's something we need to watch. And I think we sent a letter of support, Andy, did we, for this project?
What's the date?
Yeah. It would bring a lot of employment and a lot of prestige in Norco College. One of the interesting things is that normally, this would be a Cal Tech, something like that. But what they're discovering is that there's enough of think tank in some of the junior colleges, that more and more junior colleges are actually doing things for a lot less money that normally go to the big USC's and stuff. They're on... They're now in the planning stages of doing the 3,000-square-foot Veterans Center. And internally, the new road system they've created and the widenings and stuff is really helping traffic. They're in touch, I think, with Andy about what we can do to help them at the corner of Second and Hamner. And other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Other than what I was talking about, Councilmember Hannah and myself went to the League of Cities meeting held in Canyon Lake earlier, two weeks ago. And it was very informative. A lot of things coming down that they're finding out they're opposed to, some of the laws that have come out of Sacramento recently, or especially regarding Prop. 47, 57, and AB 109. These are merchants and business owners that have just been fed up with it. So, they're trying to do as much as they can to, I guess, toughen up the laws a little bit for them on their part. Other than that, on a fun note, myself, Councilman Newton, Kevin, the other guys you missed out. We got the judge, the girls' softball teams banners. And JT's sitting back there. That was his first time experiencing doing it. I think we scared him away. The fun part, about 50 years of softball here in the City of Norco. And it actually goes further than that before, when there were the other teams. There's actually 60 years. But what an experience. And if you never get a chance to see these young ladies out playing softball, they're our future. You got... You know, you have to admit, Norco High School has been ranked nationally number one several years. And this is where they come from, right over there at Waymaken and all our parks, these kids. This is... They're awesome. So, kudos to them. And on that note, we'll go to City Council consent items. And the city manager wants to pull item E. Anybody else? Other items pulled?
We've got a C and F.
Greg is C and F. And I'm going to pull G. Some consent counter. Do I have a motion to approve all the remainders?
Motion to approve.
My first and a second? So, we're actually only voting on A, B?
A, B.
A, B?
Okay, that motion carries unanimously.
And Greg, you pulled C?
Thank you. This is on Planning Commission minutes. Actually, there's two items. One is the... It's item number four, Business Item Site Plan 2017-17. This is a request for an accessory building. I noticed that it was a 3-2 vote on this accessory building. And I believe it was a code case, and I think that... Well, I'd like to appeal it for council to discuss at the next available time.
And a first and a second? Any further discussion?
I'll have to do a verbal roll call vote for this. Councilmembers Newton?
Yes.
Vash?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Grandmeyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Kevin, you did D.
I had a second item on planning.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's item under public hearings, item C. It's tentative map 37173. And on the advice of the Planning Director, I'm to ask this of John, but I already know John's answer. So, I'm just going to throw this out that this is a division of a three-acre parcel, which I know this would be coming to us as a public hearing. And my... Which I don't have that much heartburn on. What I have concerns on, and this has been going on... Chad, you're going to take the brunt of it, but it's before you were ever here, okay? So, you kind of get a pass. What concerns me is that this property stands a very good chance of being in violation of stormwater prevention plan. The... And I've been asking for a very long time on this that I don't want to give up any leverage, okay? That I don't want to go through the process of a lot split if we don't have the leverage to clean up what I would consider all the best management plans and the requirements by the state, as you well know, as far as notice of intent, the status of notice of intent. There's like a... It's called a WDI. It's Water Discharge. And then if that project is completed, I guess you would call that an NOT, a Notice of Termination. And I don't know the status of any of those items other than those properties have been in disrepair as far as stormwater mitigation for a very, very long time, and nothing's ever been done. So, I kind of want to hold that over before we go to this division of property in the public hearing. And I know what you're going to tell me, that I can only... I mean, all this is a split of two lots. And the property owners, as long as they meet the code in terms of what lot splits require, we don't really have any ability to say, "No, we're not going to approve a lot split." But that said, this is, as we made it very clear at the Planning Commission meeting, this is not the approval of a project. I mean, there is no project proposed. It's just bare dirt. And that the issues that you're going to want to address are going to be conditions of any project that comes forward. In terms of... I don't know enough about the status of the property with regard to the stormwater issues. I mean, it may be that we can separately pursue that with those properties. That I don't know. Well, I guess my feeling is that these are a potential violation. I'm saying 99% sure. Before the lot split, if we're going to give up leverage, that if you go ahead and do that lot split, we're still going to be stuck with that looking... The condition it is and in violation. You have no hammer. Well, unless there's some nuisance that... I mean, code violation type nuisance, we don't have any hammer. After the division of the property, it's going to be exactly the same physical condition it is today. They just have a right to split it. The only time that we're going to get the opportunity, again, absent some nuisance issues, is when there's a project proposed. And it's my understanding from, again, just from the applicant's comments at the Planning Commission, that he believes that the property is marketable in a divided state, but is not marketable currently. And so, it's at least arguably more likely we're going to see a resolution to that problem by granting the lot split than by not doing it. And my issue is that with the lot split so much, John, and it's not a code enforcement case, it's a violation of state law. Yeah, which we don't enforce. But if there's some violation of state law, then we can... Well, yes, we do. Chad, you want to comment on that?
Just to clarify, I mean, we are aware of the issue of that property. We have contacted the state, asking them to investigate the properties because the jurisdiction is with the state and not with the city. Only thing that we can enforce, which is now defunct as far as their original grading permit. It's actually expired, so they couldn't do new work without re-engaging the city. But we have reported to the state regarding those parcels as not being in compliance with their state-manned requirements. And I believe...
Which is really what our remedy is right now.
Talked with them today, too. I don't have the discussion regarding what occurred.
Sure. And then I guess that's the point I'm making, that they get their lot split. We're going to look at that until they further get down the road. Yeah. Unfortunately, the same thing would be true if they don't divide the property. Nothing changes that... I mean, I... We don't have any legal authority to deny the subdivision or the parcel split. And we potentially incur liability to the property owner by denying it on grounds that are unrelated. It's not to deny it. It's to get this... You understand what I'm saying. I know what you're saying. Do you understand what I'm saying? Get it cleaned up, and then let's move forward. We just don't have the authority to do that. But, I mean, I think from, based on what Chad said, that we can certainly pursue the state. And I don't mean... I don't know that this... I don't recall, Steve, maybe you do, that this property owner is a new property owner, is not?
No.
No, he's not?
So, let me... And I just... I don't want to interject here. All the Planning Commission did was recommend that the lot split go to City Council at a future date. They didn't approve of any other project other than the split of it.
There's not even a project proposed.
Right. So, all they wanted was to... They looked at it and then sent it to us. There are no conditions what they put on it, nothing like that.
Yeah. The only conditions we can put on a parcel split is the conditions that we have in the code.
Okay. So, that it still has to come to council for any conditions or even approval of the split?
Yeah. They're just... It's like a tentative map, the way we approve final maps. But we can't impose conditions that we don't have the authority to impose. I mean, it's not a project.
Okay, right. Greg?
Yeah. I just disagree with the... That it's up to the state to enforce those requirements. Again, I mean, I talked to Chad. If there's some ability for us to enforce it, we'll certainly do it.
Again, I'd have to investigate, talk with the state as far as their... Because, again, the approvals of their conditions was done by the state. The only thing we approved initially was their grading permit. So, my understanding is that any determination or penalties or requirements is determined by the state.
You could also would have looked at their stormwater prevention plan.
Correct. But which is governed by the state. And so, if they're in failure of that, then... The state would need to interject in and handle that issue.
Yeah, but if there's... All right, John. Got it. No leverage. Whatever leverage you have, you recommend we give up. Well, I don't recommend you give up. But presumably, the property owner wants to sell the property and... And that's great. Develop the property. And then we get them. Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to make a motion, or...
No, I don't think so.
Okay. We have to do something with it, correct?
With item 2C, the recap?
Yeah.
Motion to receive and file.
Okay.
Motion to receive and file.
A second hand? All right. Item D? Kevin?
Mayor, I just wanted to follow up on that motion that passes 4-1 with Councilmember Newton voting no.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
I just wanted to tell you, Chad, how pleased I was with this report. You may not know this, but this is something that we've been working on since I got on Park and Rec Commission in 1997. And it goes clear back to there. And we came up with some good plans. Don't get me wrong, but this is really good. And I'm really, really pleased by this. It's just well organized, lots of good information. And I'm wondering, are we going to be able to put this maybe online so people can go to it and see it and...
Yes, this will be published online. It'll be part of our website in several different locations because obviously, we want the public to make sure that they're following these guidelines when they're considering or interested in planting any trees that might be involved in the public right of way.
Yeah. No, it's really a good addendum, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
I appreciate that, and I thank the stuck committee for their help on this.
Yeah. Anyway, a motion to approve unless there's other comments.
Any other comments? Do I have a second? Second by Councilman Hannah?
That motion passes unanimously.
Item E, Andy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I requested for this item to be pulled from the consent calendar for two reasons. One, I want to take a couple of minutes to provide a summary report. And secondly, I'd like to give a chance to Battalion Chief Lane and Northwest Division Chief Ahmad to make some comments relating to this particular item. make some comments relating to this, this particular item. It's hard to believe that it's been six years since we entered into this partnership with Riverside County Fire slash Cal Fire. And when we entered into this agreement, it was largely an agreement that was driven because of financial constraints. But over the last six years, this agreement has not only saved the city significant amounts of money, but the level and quality of services, as well as the resources that have been provided by Cal Fire under this contract has been very outstanding. The requested extension is a four, is a three-year extension, which includes fire protection, fire prevention. There are also a couple of subsidiary agreements that are attached to this, which is for medical, which is for fire prevention, as well as for engine replacement agreement. The, in terms of what this contract will cost the city over the next three years, is approximately $13.5 million, based on the estimates that have been provided by Cal Fire. It's, it's important to note that those estimates are based on the staffing levels that the city has chosen to cover the two fire stations that we currently have in the city. And those exhibits, that is Exhibit A, that depicts the cost for the next three years, fiscal year 2018, 19, 2019, 2020, as well as fiscal year 2020 and 2021. In terms of how this current, proposed agreement compares with the current agreement, the FY 2018, 2019 proposed agreement represents approximately a 4% cost increase over our current FY 2017, 2018 estimated budget. For the remaining two fiscal years of, under the contract, the contracts are proposed to increase approximately 5% each of those next two years. And again, as I pointed out, it's important to keep in mind that the Exhibit A, which is the estimate of what this contract will cost, typically, the actual costs usually come in much lower than the, the costs that have been reflected in Exhibit A. With that, I, again, I'd like to have a couple of comments. Before, but before I do that, I'd like to note, when we entered into this contract, the city was spending upwards of $6 million on our previous in-house fire services. As you look at these proposed contracts, we are yet to even get closer to that amount. And over the, over the past six years, this contract has generated significant amount of savings to the city of Norco. In fact, I would argue that most of the savings that we have accrued in the city's general fund is a direct result of the savings that have accrued to the city from this contract. And certainly is a partnership that we want to continue with, with them, given the quality of, of services and the resources that are deployed to the, to the city of Norco. With that, I would give you a chance, BC Lane, to make a couple of comments, as well as our Northwest Division Chief Ahmad Abdul.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers and residents. It's an absolute honor to represent Cal Fire Riverside County Fire and be your fire department. We are so proud to be here and have Norco as our partner in a regional cooperative fire protection system. I can say that our, our folks on the ground are very pleased to be here and serve this city very well. I think you've seen that every day, as well as even today at the every 15 minutes drill. So with that, I'd like to introduce representative from our management team is Division Chief Abdul Ahmad. He is currently overseeing the Northwest Division while that vacancy is being filled, and I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of City Council, Mr. City Manager, staff and members of the public. Thank you for your kind words, Mr. City Manager. We truly are grateful that we are in a position to provide the services to the residents of the city of Norco, and have enjoyed a very fruitful partnership since 2012. The item before you tonight is a three-year contract renewal, and we are hopeful that, that you will consider this matter and pass it successfully, so that we can continue to provide the excellent services of Riverside County Fire Department. One of the other things I wanted to share with you under the direction of Chief Lane, that the firefighters that make up your fire department here locally, works very hard to meet the emergency needs of the citizens for the city of Norco. And in those instances where the magnitude of the emergency has exceeded the ability of the local forces, the cooperative integrated regionalized fire protection then kicks in, and we're able to provide those resources to come in and assist in the mitigation efforts for the, all emergencies that, all hazard emergencies that we can potentially face. So, thank you for your consideration tonight. I'm available to you for any questions, comments or concerns you may have.
Does Council have any questions? Greg?
How do you enjoy working with Battalion Chief Scott?
Well, I have several Battalion Chiefs that I work closely with, and I can honestly say that they're all very capable chief officers. I particularly like the relationship that Battalion Chief Lane has with the City Manager and the City Council, as well as with other members of your commissions here in the city and the public. I think he's somewhat locally here, and I can tell that that is something that is very important to the makeup of this great city.
Kevin?
I don't really have a question, but moving to Cal Fire is one of the proudest things that I've ever been involved in. We had quite a team, and we went from, and nothing against our former fire department, but all of a sudden, we no longer had the unfunded liabilities, we saved a lot of money, we essentially saved the city, in my opinion, but boy, we got crackerjack emergency services. All of a sudden, our stations are backfilled, we're training residents in emergency services, I mean, all these things that I didn't expect would happen so fast, literally happened in the next couple of years. And all of the dire predictions that people said were going to happen if we went to this sort of a dispassionate organization like Cal Fire, none of them are true. I feel like the day they stepped in, the Cal Fire guys became Norco firefighters. I love the fact you don't get involved in our politics. I mean, it has been, probably of all the things that I've been involved with, this is the single most proud, proudest thing that I've actually been part of since I got on City Council, and I want to thank you guys, just fantastic job. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Burwood?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes, I wanted to tell you how proud that I am that we got you guys on board. I was the mayor whenever we made the switch, and like Kevin, I didn't believe any of the negative stuff that people were throwing at us, and you guys have proven that it was all negative. But one thing is all the service we get with the extra stations in the area, we get extra coverage and everything, and all the good, more modern vehicles and equipment that you furnished for the NART team, plus being able to send your units in to train with us and everything, so when we go somewhere, there's a Cal Fire rig shows up and we have at least three extra bodies. We appreciate that, and I just appreciate everything you guys do. Robin, forgot to bring the cutout tonight, because we never know when Chief's going to have to be replaced with his cutout, but anyway, thank you very much.
Robin?
As the rookie council member up here, I have appreciated how Cal Fire helps to educate council, in particular, on the services that are available. I know, right when I came on, I was given a tour of our local facilities, regional facilities, and shown all the assets and resources that are available to our city, which are really amazing. And I've been able to spend some time at the local station with the guys to see what goes on, on a day-to-day basis, and they've been really open and welcoming. Chief Lane is very accessible, he's quite open to taking pranks and being messed with as well, which I appreciate, so they've done a really good job for us, and I, I appreciate the work that Cal Fire does for Norco.
Okay, I'm the tougher guy, but I appreciate what you guys do. A couple of things, and you don't have to give me an answer tonight, because I, I foresee this happening, this is not on you. As the state and the counties start to balance their budgets and try to eke out all the dollars they can to funding, just a question for you, and you don't have to give me an answer tonight. One, future status of that station on Hamner Avenue, I don't know how many calls for service, Chief, that they probably do here in the city, but I know that the state's paying for those, and eventually, we're going to get tagged with them sooner or later. And then Chief Lonzo also talked someday about in the future of putting paramedics there at the city's cost. Again, I don't need answers tonight, these are things that, as we go through on our budget processing, and we talk about continuaries and contracts, those are things that we probably should be addressing as, like I said, as the state shrinks their budget down for you guys and for the county, as they do the same, and put more emphasis on the cities to pay for these things. So just, that's what I'm looking at in the future, when we see future budgets and things like that.
Well, I appreciate you not putting me on the spot for what the state may or may not do.
Right, and I knew that.
Yes. When I look at the state facility, it responds to incidents when it's available. It's not, although it's stationed in, or located in the city of Norco, it belongs to the state of California, and they obviously have a mission to, to meet. But when they are available, we utilize those resources, and in this situation, to respond to incidents in the city of Norco. And that's being done at no cost to you. At some point, you know, most cities do grow, they start to experience more incidents, and that will be something that would be monitored by the local Battalion Chief, Chief Lane, working with your city manager to try and find out, to one, identify if there's an issue, study it, and then make a recommendation on whether or not it's time to consider the expansion of fire protection. I don't anticipate the state of California charged or sending the city of Norco a bill. I hope that doesn't happen, because it would also affect several other locations throughout this county. But I think that when we look at an issue like that, it would be whether or not the council here would like to expand services, and working out some type of an agreement, in this case, co-locating a city resource with a state resource. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Okay. Thanks, Scott.
Mr. Mayor, just a question, wouldn't the bill go to Corona? Because it's called the Norco, I mean, it's called...
Yeah, it should, yeah.
Can you get that changed, by the way? Corona? You guys have been here since 1909, along with them, Corona, this is in Norco, it's got to be changed to Norco, State Fire Station, Norco.
Yeah, they'll have to send the bill to Corona.
We'll share the concern.
But that, that's fine.
Thank you, Chief, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
And thanks, Scott, appreciate that. All right. Go ahead, we have a motion to approve, I have a second? Second?
That motion passes unanimously.
And Greg, you pulled F.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I don't want this to come as too big of a shock, but I wanted to compliment my colleagues and our city manager on renegotiating this agreement with these developers. I know we somewhat rolled the dice, and Andy, I just wanted to compliment you on hanging tough and moving forward with that. That's all.
Kudos to you, Andy, and your staff.
Does Andy's heart still work?
Yeah, it is, he's...
Motion approved.
Got a motion, I'll second that.
Okay, please vote. That motion passes unanimously.
Okay. And I pulled G, and the reason I pulled this, I, I spoke to the city clerk a little bit about this. This is the first report that has been under our new housing thing, is going to be submitted, is that not correct, Steve?
Correct.
So, this is probably our base report for the state on these housing things, this mandated law, correct?
Correct.
And I know the city manager's going to speak about this a little bit, because I asked him to. And I want my other fellow councilpeople on this one, there are almost 15 new housing laws that were passed by Sacramento last year that have gone to effect. Some of these are for incentives, and I think that the one that, part of this report comes through, and under SB 35, you want to be cognizant on this when we send in these reports and how we deal with it. According to this review, it says, SB 35 takes a stick approach, requiring governments to streamline review, and if they fail to accommodate housing production in the past. Well, since this is our first report, there are no past reports. So it behooves us, the council and the Planning Commission and those other ones, when we do that, to make sure we're, our information, because California takes a one-size, one-size-fits-all approach when they deal with housing and with any of their things up in Sacramento. Is that not the way they handle it? They don't look at us individually, determine the large lots, the animal keeping, or anything like that.
Nope.
They just pass laws because that's what they do. So, and Andy, I'm going to, you alluded to a workshop a little bit?
No, what, what we are planning to do is to make sure we have a strategy to address the city's ability to meet its affordable housing requirements and the regional housing needs as required on our housing element, is that myself and the planning staff, as well as Mayor Hoffman and Mayor Protem, Robin Grumire, we are going to meet and strategize on what we need to do. There are some parcels of property here in the city of Norco that, that have overlay requirements for affordable housing, that those parcels are no longer available, and so we need to come up with a strategy in terms of how we fill in the, the missing availability. So that is what we, we need to do before June, when we are required to provide information on that.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, with that, I move to approve or receive and file.
Please vote. That motion passes unanimously.
All right. Okay, now it's time for public comments. This is the time when persons in the audience wishing to address the city council regarding matters not on the agenda may speak. The speaker card in the back of the room is presented to the city clerk, so that you may be recognized or in mind. It's three minutes. And, Cheryl?
Jeff Cahann?
Good evening, Jeff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Thank you for allowing me to address our city council on a matter that frankly, I'm very upset, not with the city, with the state. As you just said 30 seconds ago, Sacramento's out of control. They passed laws, one-size-fits-all, regardless of how it impacts us. We've been hit with the California Voting Rights Act, that the city has... As you just said 30 seconds ago, Sacramento's out of control. They passed laws, one-size-fits-all, regardless of how it impacts us. We've been hit with the California Voting Rights Act that the city has stood together against, and we want to fight the city on that, because it impacts us. They passed laws like AB 109, that hamstrings our law enforcement ability to, you know, punish the wrongdoers, and it lets them out, and it just causes, they're out of control. Everything that Sacramento does, like you just said, they pass laws, because that's what they do. I'm here to highlight Los Alamos and what Los Alamos did the other night. And I would, it's just, it's gotten to the point where finally, somebody stood up and said, "This is enough." They passed laws that are in direct contradiction to federal law. You all took an oath, when you became city council members, to uphold the United States Constitution. SB 54 contradicts federal law, and it makes you have to choose. It makes our law enforcement have to choose. And we just heard tonight what a great job, an outstanding team we have with Riverside Sheriff's Office protecting us. But SB 54 hamstrings them and tells them that they cannot cooperate with other law enforcement agencies to protect us, the citizens of the residents of the state of California. So with Los Alamos going on record, because if California says they want to be sanctuary against the feds, and Los Alamos said they're a sanctuary against the sanctuary state laws. So I would recommend that you agendize for our next council meeting, a resolution to follow in the footsteps of Los Alamos and other cities that are talking about doing the same thing, and let's get on the early list to oppose, because we've got to send a message to Sacramento that's enough enough, and they can't just pass laws that they want to pass, and it impacts us here at the local level, and we have no reason, I mean, there's nothing we can do about it. We can do something about it. And if we and Los Alamos, Murrieta, and a bunch of other towns that are talking about doing this, I think we'll start to send a message that they can't just keep doing what they've been doing. So I would urge you to agendize and look into creating a resolution similar to what Los Alamos did. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Jim Pollard.
Good evening, Jeff.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilman Jim. Oh, I know who you're talking to. Staff, I'm here to commend you on the youth activities that we have here in Norco for all the years that I've lived here, but I see that there's a problem over at the Scout House and with the baseball field on Cedar Avenue. The parking there is causing a problem. There's no striping in the parking lot, and when the parents park, it causes a problem where they're not in a space, and then other people get upset. And especially on Tuesday nights, we have three groups of youth there, the high condo, the Boy Scouts, and the baseball team are practicing. And with the spring, all the baseball, there just isn't enough parking. Now we're getting parents parking out on the street, and kids having to get out of car on Cedar Avenue. I think we need to look into maybe improving that parking lot with just even striping, or taking out maybe that island that isn't of use at all. And I know a Tuesday night, if you want to go by there and see the problem, I'd like to see, you know, I think it's a safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And I noticed Brian writing "Notestown," so.
Bill Naylor.
Good evening, Bill.
Good evening, council and staff. I'd like to just take a minute to thank the council and staff for their support with the volunteer program that the city has in trail maintenance. Just to give you a quick update, we were going to do some work on California, but because of an item that's coming up later on in your agenda, we postponed that, and we decided to do a separate project. We took a number of volunteers from the community, and we went up and down Sixth Street, replacing approximately 10 posts and about 30 rails that were broken or rotted out, and we wanted to get that Sixth Street ready for our upcoming horse week parade. So I just wanted to thank staff, council, and the community that did come together to do that. Thank you.
Bill, you and your volunteers are really appreciated. Thank you.
Harvey Sullivan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. How are you today?
Good. How about yourself?
Fine, thank you. Council, staff, thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate all the work you do. I know it's a tireless, endless job, and some of us stand up here sometime and holler at you, and some of us stand up here sometime and appreciate you. But when I walk out that door, it's a different story. It's, you know, I leave it all in here. So I'm here tonight again to ask you, I was before you two weeks ago, to ask you on a case involving Ron Muger, to put it on the agenda, to agendize it so that he could get a fair hearing before the city council. Myself and he believes that there's a lot of information that we have been given, that's been given, turned in and put in, that has not got to the city's attorney. So we'd like to get that put on the agenda, and I know it was only closed session tonight, so if you settled it, then that would be a great idea, a great thing. If you didn't settle it, we'd like to see you put it on the agenda. And at the last meeting, when you started to talk about it, Mr. Harper said we couldn't do it, because he was still, was under litigation, and he was still being represented by an attorney. He is no longer in that, we have that substitution been made, that he's representing his own self. So thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Harvey.
Mayor, that concludes public comments.
All right. Closing public comments. Moving right along on number five, discussion action items, comprehensive trail master plan and trail circulation plan. Chat?
Okay. So this has been a longstanding item, going back a couple of years, when the council approved the strategic plan, we had a long target goal to look at all our infrastructure and look at its long-term maintenance and replacement. And now we are, we are, we've done, related to the water rates and providing funding for sewer water. We've dealt with that infrastructure. We are now looking at the streets and trails. That's been a long discussed item. Historically, we have not budgeted more than $30,000 a year for maintenance. We have periodically budgeted a couple hundred thousand dollars for miscellaneous trail improvement projects over the years. So what we need to look at is, one, is recognizing the trail system is obviously a critical part of Norco. I mean, it's the veins of the city as far as how the equestrians and pedestrians move around through this city. And so we want to take a serious look at that and determine, really, what do we have? And as a newcomer to the city, you know, I endeavor to look at what's been done by my predecessors, look at information. And unfortunately, there is all kinds of information out there. There's probably half a dozen different maps that have been created over the last letter of 20 years. Not a lot of information on how they came about those decisions, and ideas of what's a trail, what's not a trail, where they're located, et cetera. So I decided to just take a fresh approach. And so staff, over the last six months, prior to taking it to STUC Committee, we spent a lot of time kind of going out there, determining what we believe, and determined right now as far as what do we have now versus what was identified 20 years ago. What do we have now? What type of a trail is it? What condition is it in? What type of trail fencing does it have? Does it have any at all? And that way, we can put together a comprehensive map of what we have today. It doesn't limit what we will have in the future. It just simply says, "Here's what I have now." And from that information, we have been able to build basically the cost structure of what we will take to maintain our trail system. And that was an effort that we did with the STUC Committee in trying to endeavor, even though we may know the types of trails we have, where they're at, et cetera, we need to decide, well, how are we going to maintain these? To what level? And so we worked, we came up with a general recommendation amongst our staff, and we present the STUC Committee, and we'll review that. So what, and then, so in doing that, we decided, well, how are we going to manage this long term as an actual document? And this actually started, this comprehensive trail plan actually started in 2002, I think it was, my, a couple predecessors for me, they, and actually, the planning, the director's department, I think his last name is Daniels, started this process with the STUC Committee in trying to develop a plan. And then it started again in 2008, and ironically, over those time periods, there was a lot of debate about this issue. There's passionate beliefs about how, what should be represented, so it couldn't even get out of committee. So I'm very excited, actually, third time's a charm for me, to actually get this document. We massaged it, we changed it, we deleted some things, added some stuff. So we, with staff and STUC, we worked very hard, and it was a very passionate discussion on a lot of different topics. But what I want to point out in regard to this discussion is that this is not a static, permanent document. This is meant to be a living, breathing document that basically says what we have today and how we want to manage what we have going forward. And so it was a very collaborative effort of folks trying to determine what they want to represent in this current document in the form of Norco. So in that, and I won't go through the entire report, but I want to emphasize, you know, we did, we did highlight specific things. We gave a long introduction as far as, you know, the purpose of this master plan and what we're doing it for. And then we talk about the purpose of the trails, what's the point of having the trail system? Then we identify the pedestrian equestrian trails through the system by type. We identify that there's different types of trails that we have, and they clearly identify what those are, what determines that trail. So in the future, my predecessors would come after me or whatnot, "No, this is how we came up with what this is. This is the terminology." So we can continue on that when we classify new trails that may come in, et cetera, or trails that we improve and bring to another level, and what that level should be. Then we talk about the maintenance, and we determine, okay, of those trail classifications, how should they be maintained? Whether it's a engineered slash bridle trail, which is our newest standard, or more of a soft shoulder trail that doesn't have a standard, and it really doesn't get much maintenance. It's really just the rotted-out trails you see most often in large portions of the city versus the engineered trails that are compacted and maintained, like the ones you see in the LMDs, and they obviously pay for that, that maintenance in that area. So we tried to highlight that. Of course, we also had to highlight what the city's responsibility was and what the residents' responsibility was. We brought in other issues like keeping the trails clean, pointing out it's the residents' responsibility to keep it free of weeds and debris from the trail at the property line through the curb and gutter. It's their responsibility to keep the weeds and stuff out of there, not the city. We're responsible for maintaining the DG itself, keeping it compacted, adding it, so if there's any erosion. Same thing, talking about trees, pointing out that they can deal with that. So we tried to have a comprehensive document that brought in different components of the municipal code and referenced those sections in there, so that people aren't having to go someplace else to find where that reference is. We tried to include that. With that, we also included the standards. We wanted people to understand there are standards of how we develop our trails. It's in this document. You don't have to go find it someplace else. So again, as standards change over time, we'll continually change this document and update that. Again, it's meant to be a breathing document. Then we talk about the trail materials, identifying again what materials were currently ever approved. Things change over time, and materials that we'll accept, that are acceptable for footing for horses may change. We'll continue to update that, but at least tell people right now, as you develop properties and what is occurring, these are the materials that are acceptable, you know, using pavers in certain areas, in commercial areas, or stamped asphalt, et cetera. So we highlight that. Then we talk about the trail fencing, talking about the work that's been done to develop trail fencing in the current standard, so people have a history of how do we get from wood to this, to whatever may come 30 years from now. And then we deal with an important issue that is talked by many, is encroachments. We have a lot of encroachments into our, under our right-of-way that impact the trail system. But it's also a very sensitive issue, because it's about enforcement, it's about going in there and telling somebody that they need to remove their impediments. Some of them are very nice improvements that they've worked hard on, but now we are reclaiming our asset, which is our trail system. And so it's a policy in there, but it's still a, it's a governing body decision whether we enforce that. But we want to point out, there is an encroachment policy already existing in the city. We can effectively, through this program, enforce it. It tells people that you shouldn't be doing this if you encroach, and why you are in violation. So easily, as one document say, "This is why you're being cited." It's there. It's not something they have to look for. So we've tried to make it very inclusive. Then our appendix A basically is a trail circulation map, and in that, again, what we try to do is try to provide something that's more effective, rather than one large map that people have to see. We really tried to create individual pages that focus in on those areas, and basically creates grids. So you've been provided individual maps of specific areas in your report that really lets you hone in and see the details of what we're showing as a trail, rather than looking at it real long distance and not sure what those little squiggly lines mean. And then we have the standards at the end. And again, the trail map itself will be something that's going to be published online. It'll be the one that replaces the existing one that we have. It'll be available through the app to view it. It'll be available on the website. And again, the map itself and this plan are not static. I want to keep emphasizing that, because there's a fear that this is now and forever, nothing's going to, this is going to be what we have forever, it's never going to change. I've committed to the STUC Committee to at least bring this back once a year, even if we don't need it, just to verify if they have any concerns. Otherwise, if there are changes, if new development comes in, we'll come in and point out that we're going to change the map, so that we highlights any new trails that are coming in, and where they're going to be, et cetera. So this is, this is not something that will just come back whenever directed. We're going to bring this back on a regular basis, just to see what has changed, what needs to be done. Let me real quick, this gives me a chance to highlight. This is our GIS system, which the council approved, us developing in 2006, which is our geographical information system, which is our mapping. So we've been spending the last couple of years mapping all our assets, and it's continually being reviewed and updated, and one of these was the trail system. And I can show you real quick, the existing trail system map, this is our current map. You know, it's got no definition, and it shows you where you can go, and what we defined it. And what we did here is basically become a blank sheet and say, "You know what? Let's start from fresh. What do we truly have?" Because there was a lot of debate whether a trail was a trail, what should be there? Should it be shown on a private road? Should it be along a storm drain channel, because it's flood control property? We really wanted to make sure that this map was as accurate as possible for one very important reason, is legal liability. My job is to protect the city. And if we're saying that there's a trail somewhere that we're, number one, not maintaining, or it's not our property, we set ourselves up for liability. So the importance of this document on itself and the map is that hopefully, we can follow up with a level of maintenance that keeps up that liability, that we're trying to keep that trail up to that level, because we have a standard that says this is how this type of trail should be maintained. If we're shown to not maintain that, because we're not putting the dollars behind that to maintain our infrastructure, it creates a liability issue for me. So one of the things we looked at, and I expressed to the STUC Committee, is that I felt it was important to eliminate trails where we had a legal liability, take them off flood control property. Flood control doesn't want our trails, or us on their property. Taking them off private roads. Private road is private property. We don't want to direct people on a private road, and potentially, honestly, you can have an altercation with a resident who doesn't want people going through. You know, by having it on the map, and they say, "We followed that. You said it was, I can go this way." No, that's now gone. It's not, doesn't mean people can't ride there, I'll emphasize that. I know equestrians will ride wherever they want. This doesn't prevent anybody from riding where they feel they want to, but it's not beginning to good because the map said you could go this way, because, because number one, it's either not a maintained trail, or two, it's a private property. And that's what we really focused on. It was strictly a liability issue. It wasn't a desire just to delete trails, because I didn't want to maintain them. Whether they're on their map or not, again, I only get $30,000 a year at this point to maintain trails, which means they aren't getting maintained. Hopefully, by what we produce here and the numbers that we've been able to calculate for actual maintenance, which the city manager is going to review with the council at the special meeting regarding CIP on, I think it's April 4th, so prior to the next city council meeting, we're going to get into what those costs are. But those costs are based off of what this plan states, the level of maintenance we're looking to do. So in here, just real quick, I'll show you, we've added in, which wasn't there before, the Norco Hills Trails, which are again, up in this area here. We've added those in, so that they're shown on the map. We have the backyard trails defined as a different color now, so people can understand a backyard trail, which is a certain condition, which again, per municipal code, is supposed to be maintained by the residents. So we don't vouch for what happens there. Reality is, is I end up cleaning most of it up, because the residents failed to clean it up. the Norco Hills Trails, which are again, up in this area here. We've added those in, so that they're shown on the map. We have the backyard trails defined as a different color now, so people can understand a backyard trail, which is a certain condition, which again, per municipal code, is supposed to be maintained by the residents. So we don't vouch for what happens there. Reality is, I end up cleaning most of it up, because the residents failed to clean it up, removed trees that have been grown forever. So we end up doing a lot of maintenance in there anyway to make it safe, but this is, these backyard trails are resident responsibility. Then we have soft shoulder trails. Basically, that's the lesser trail than an engineered trail, which is what you see up, the bridle trails up in the hills, and this area down here, and up the bluff. So this shows you where all these soft shoulder trails are at that, and where they're located. And then we have all the bridle trails, or the engineered trails. And again, the terminology is not set, we tried to find something that was, since I'm not a horseman, and I'm more technical, and I could say engineered this, and non-engineered that. I think that's not what this map should convey. I wanted to use something that was more familiar with the community. What was offered was bridle trail for an engineered trail, and soft shoulder for the non-engineered trail, and its condition. And that seemed to be acceptable to the commission. Again, I just wanted something that was a little more generic, as far as the community could understand, rather than saying, well, that's engineered trail or non-engineered, that doesn't really mean anything. So to give you perspective as far as, so we have all that, we also have layers that show the types of trails that we have, whether it's wood or vinyl. And you know, we'll turn this off here. So this shows you where all your wood fencing is, all this brown here, and this shows you where the vinyl fencing is. So we now know where it is. And again, this helps me to calculate the many feet I have, this is how many miles of physical fencing I need to remove, and there's gaps in here, this isn't 100%. We know there's gaps, a missing trail, et cetera, but it's represented what we know is existing. And to give you an idea, as far as the impacts, so this trail system doesn't include the Santa Ana Trails, and we do have that listed, we have the Santa Ana Trails in there, the current orientation that we have, it is, it is an older version, and I know it changes, but at least wanted to show that there's a trail system there. Then we also included the points of entry, sorry, here. So we're highlighting different places you can enter into the Santa Ana Trail. We show the staging areas here and here, but we keep pointing out, the stars here show the entry points. We're trying to make it, again, things that weren't there before, a map that is user-friendly, that you can know where you can go or not go. So in here, I wanted to show you kind of the difference, and let me turn this stuff off here. So the green is where the trails used to be. So I wanted you to see this, I wanted you to understand what the impact was. This new map here, not counting the trails up in the hills, is 99 miles. This map before, the green one, by itself, was 103. So we're talking about four miles of miscellaneous trail that were removed, because we believe we legally shouldn't call that a trail, for either it wasn't our property, or we don't actually maintain it, it's not even close to a condition of being called a trail. So again, places like this, this flood control area here, it's not there, any of the private streets, again, there's no trail in these areas, these private roads, so we took that off. And there may be a physical trail there, but it's not ours, so I'm not showing it. And so it gives you an idea, if we turn this off or on, just really the difference, what we took out. And it's strictly because there's, in the press, and we reviewed all these with the commission, they gave impassioned opinions about things, we added some things on that were originally deleted, because we reviewed it, we got into Google Earth, we looked at the scenario, so we took a lot of time on this. But again, this is not a static map, we can change it anytime, we're just trying to set the basis of, a map should be set up for, based off the specific logic. And the logic was, what do we maintain, or what should we maintain, and what liability do we pose by showing something, so if we, if it's not our property? Those are really the two caveats that we looked at. It wasn't whether it cost a million dollars, we're simply saying, that's our trails, what we got to figure out eventually is what we're going to put into them to maintain them. And that's not what was for discussion tonight, as far as the cost. But I am interested in your opinions on what the commission came up with, with the overall maintenance. And what we basically came up with in the plan is, for bridle trails, engineered trails, it would get a, it would get groomed and maintained and compacted at least once a year, as a system. And those are easier to maintain, because there's no impediments. It's trails 12 feet wide, there's nothing in the way, they can go up and down, they groom, it's easy, it's not an issue. The soft shoulder trails are far more difficult, because those trails, which are obviously a lot older, they don't match the current standard of a trail. That trail has trees in the way, it has hydrants in the way, aerobacks in the way, there's physical impediments that are in the way to prevent it being 12 feet wide, and you go up and down with equipment. So they've never really traditionally gotten the, at all, the maintenance they should get. So what we decided, because there's a lot more of those trails that need to be done, and removal of a lot of those impediments, and we're physically going to be able to go down with equipment on a quickly basis, versus going in and out, having to come back, you know, hand-to-hand tools to get around some areas that are really constricted, we need to look at, when it comes time for that maintenance, is removing some of those impediments. It includes some of my infrastructure, as far as water, hydrants, et cetera, and some of the trees. I mean, that's the reality we're talking about, is we fundamentally have to decide, are we going to switch, at some point, when we upgrade these trails, that are soft shoulder to an engineered, are they going to look like the standard? The standard does not include trees in the trails, does include any impediments in the trail, includes our infrastructure. So that is a long-term discussion we have to have, as we look for, in the future, upgrading any of these trails. Is it going to be the engineered level, or are we going to create some other standard that we don't currently have, that it's going to comply to? Because it's, it's just different now. The only thing we publish is the engineered trail standard, which, again, no impediments. So we want to make sure that you're comfortable with what we did for the soft shoulder trails, because there's so many, and there's a lot more work on those because of the impediments, even though there's about 24 miles of those types of trails, we said, okay, we're going to only do eight miles a year, and try to get through all that, because it's difficult with that much trail, that has that much additional maintenance beyond a standard bridle trail. And that maintenance is really just to level it, add dirt, compact it, just make it safe. It's not bring it to the standard of engineered trail, just getting in there, leveling the dirt, because they get eroded, eroded out, et cetera, because it's not DG. A lot of it's native dirt, and it gets moved around, especially because of the storm systems that come through and flooding. So versus DG, they're better suited and compacted to handle those storms, they get damage here and there, but we're easily able to repair them. So we thought of a, instead of assuming we were going to do all the trails in one year, we took a step back and said, let's ease into this. We can easily do the bridle trails and maintain that, because we already have the example of what Brightview does now. We know they can do that. But the soft shoulders are much more difficult. So we said, let's, let's take a reasonable goal, let's start at eight, and let's see how that goes. Maybe we only get through four, because there were so many things we had to do, there was so much conflict about how we modify the trail, if at all. We want to not overpromise what we can do. So that's what we elected to do, as far as the type of maintenance between the two trails. We obviously have nature trails, we don't do any maintenance on, those are in the hills. The backyard trails, we don't do any maintenance on, and that's per the municipal code. So overall, this is what we're proposing the map to be, as far as, you know, highlighting the entry points, showing the Santa Ana River Trails. So it's going to be a comprehensive map, that folks can know. And again, if, it'll have the terminology, so if they're interested in only riding on a bridle trail, then they can follow the bridle trails. If they don't really care, they can, they don't care what the color of the lines are and the delineation is. And again, they'll go wherever they want. So if they see a gap in there, and they want to go across, even though it's three feet wide on a parkway, that's up to them. But our map doesn't say that's a trail area, so that if something happened there, the issue is the liability is, I went there, because your map said it was, it was a trail, and my horse got spooked because of the car, because it was too close. I'm just worried about the liability issue, that's all I'm trying to express when it comes to what we define here. It does not prohibit, it does not prohibit, it does not prohibit anybody from riding wherever they want, or walking where they want. But at least, it's not going to be an issue, because we said they could go there, because this is a defined trail that we maintain to some level. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding what we put together. Again, it was a long process, but I think it's a very positive process, and this is a starting point. We can change this as we need to over time, but this lets us now move forward to say, here's what we got, here's what we're going to maintain, and now we're going to come back to you, ask you for the money to do that, hopefully. So hopefully it won't break my heart. I'd like to start maintaining these better than we have.
Thank you, Chad. Berwin, I'll start down there with you. Questions, staff?
No, good.
From it?
I have a few for you. In the staff report, you talked about getting public comment, not only did you receive input from the commission, but the public as well. How was that collected or gathered, or how was that input?
A lot of the comments and questions came at the meeting, people attended, and provide comments there. But again, I encourage those folks that were participating in the meetings, they can call me, meet with me anytime. I had certainly one person meet with me and give me lots of feedback on maps and things, and that was JT. He was a huge help on that, had a lot of input on that. And then the commissioners themselves, you know, provided information, so we tried to make sure that, again, this was an open collaborative process. If you want to participate, I'm here.
Okay. Next question, in reading through a couple of times, bicycle use is mentioned, and I know that has been kind of a hot topic a few times off and on. How was the topic of bicycle use reflected in the discussions and things like that when you guys talked about it?
Now bicycle use is, it's kind of in flux as far as, because mainly, we focus on, and expanded, Brian's dealt with this, we tried expanding bicycle use, but we're trying to restrict it to the streets. It doesn't prohibit bicyclists to using the trails, because it's equestrian pedestrians, so they can certainly ride the trails. So we didn't, we referenced that, that they are a user of it, but we're focusing on it, because if there is going to be any bicycle designation, lanes, that would be in the, either in the street, or if it was a Class 1A trail system, you'd have a dedicated equestrian trail with a separate bike lane pedestrian trail, which we see in Eastville, which they have over there. But we don't have that design here at this point. So realistically, we're pointing out, any bicyclist is simply, there's their choice to recollectionally use those trails.
Okay.
Just to add to that, the, currently, the city has a Class 2 and a Class 3 bicycle route identified in the city, and that really is to play along with the Santa Ana River Master Plan, which runs from River Road down Corridon, Norco Drive, then to Cedar, then to Alhambra, and it crosses over into Detroit, and then runs along Detroit to, eventually to River Drive, which then, at that point, it, on that side of the Hamner, it becomes a Class 3, which is a bike route, and then that connects up to Arlington eventually, to Hidden Valley, where it then becomes a Class 1. And as Chad mentioned, a Class 1 is a separate designated location for bicycles only. And Corridon's a great example, because it was a white street, we're able to allow parking on the side of the street, but also be able to put a bike lane in as well, and that's called a Class 2 there at that location. If we decided to look at expanding that in the city, then that's something we could look at, and Chad and I have talked about that, if there's other routes, and that's something we could work with both commissions on in the future.
Okay. The only reason why I bring it up is because I feel like, for intents and purposes, it's kind of in conflict of what we would necessarily want the trails to ultimately be used for, but I know I occasionally do ride a bike, but my children ride bikes around town all the time, and so sometimes the street isn't the safest place for them to be, but neither is the trail with the goat heads, so it just depends, you know, on the day. So I just thought it was interesting that bicycles were mentioned in the report. When you talk about standard or engineered trails on page nine, I did write down what is the cost, but I will save that for later. But it talks about that they'll be graded and rehabilitated at least once a year. So I'm just wondering, is there time, with everything else that Public Works has on the docket, time and/or staffing to have that be a realistic goal?
The candid answer is no. It's, most likely, if there was, if we were to do it at the cost, we'd have to expand our staff. Realistically, it would be something we would recommend to be outsourced to Brightview and other type of entity who has the resources.
Okay, very good. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin? Greg?
Sure. Compliments to you and the commission for all your work. I was under the impression this was only going to take two weeks 15 years ago, so. No, I know, there's a lot of work, so good job with that, Chad. Couple of things that concern me, though, is in understanding your comments on private roads, and living on a private road, that, could we not relieve ourselves from some of the liability by just having an asterisk on that? Because like on our street, and I know there's a couple streets also that we use to get either in and out of the hills, okay, like over by Third, but the way this is worded, where it says, private property owners may not want the public to ride through these areas, and it makes me feel that, that's not who we are as a community, I would think. I get the Disney horses to Bill Naylor going by my house, so I like the Disney horses. I mean, I can't see myself telling Billy can't ride down my street, though. But it kind of troubles me in a way.
And I agree, it's, it's not a lack of desire to want to do it, it's just, in the end, and the discussion was, well, in theory, we could put these lines in those private ocean ones as a trail, we could also put lines on areas where it's not really a trail, it's a, it's a dirt shoulder, and we put another asterisk there, this is a dirt shoulder, but, and then really, we just have lines everywhere. What's the point of the map? Just ride where you want. We really want to emphasize that this is a trail system that we built and put together a long time. Obviously, we don't maintain it the way we should, but we're trying to build it better. We don't want responsible for the trails that are in private roads, it's entirely up to the residents to maintain and take care of them. Short answer is, could we put it in there? Sure. It becomes more of a question of how on a map, assuming somebody's using it, again, most people just look at the trail and they go that direction, which on that side of it, if it's private property, it's really up to private property, or to put up something at their intersection of the roadway, private property, do not enter, not a public trail, that's up to them to distinguish that, otherwise, people will naturally think, it's welcoming, I can go that direction. But I've had, have heard, and that's why I'm sensitive to, of stories of residents who are adamantly upset of people coming down their road and riding their horses. Right or wrong, but that's a good thing to do for, as a community, it is a reality. And so I'm trying to balance, knowing that, am I protected by putting an asterisk on a map, or am I better off just not showing it as a trail that's publicly available? I don't want, you know, if someone could say, well, I thought it was it, I didn't realize what your asterisk meant, because again, it would literally be every location would need a different color designation, so that they knew, I can't go that way, and trusting that they're reading it. And again, an attorney would be better off to tell me than that. As far as what we pose or don't pose, I'm just, my thought is, don't show it, rather than take the risk, just don't show it. Could we show it? Absolutely.
Well, as this evolves, I'd like to just throw that out there, that maybe consider a little more on, you know, private streets like that. Okay? But Bill, stay out, okay? So this may lean more to Steve on this, but with this trail circulation map, knowing next year, I believe, we're going to be working on our circulation, a part of our general plan, we'll be working on our circulation element. How do these join together with trail circulation and circulation element? If you can answer that, Chad, go right ahead.
Above my pay grade, as far as that goes.
The last time we updated the circulation element, we did include the trail circulation plan. When we do update the circulation element, we're going to throw in another, because it is part of the city's circulation system. We will include this updated map and show the revisions as has been worked on by Public Works and Streets and Trails Utilities Commission. And we will, currently, the map shows the private street trails, those will ultimately get taken out to reflect what the plan here represents.
Okay. So it's all going to be a part of it then?
Yep.
Okay. Then Chad, back to you on, hopefully, the last question. This would be on your, I bet you had page numbers. Grid number P10, can you get to that? Can you zoom in?
Oh, sure.
So this is part of LMD 4, so we have engineered trails technically, okay? Except, and this is Except, in this, on Valley, by the golf course, where we have a section of no trail, okay? And this is, and we all know the reasons why, but the circulation is, that gap is If we maintain it, do we, there is no trail there.
Right.
But if we maintain it, do we take, do we assume a liability?
Well, the answer is, I think, is yes. I mean, if we, if we touch it, it's ours. And that's the general rule, we look at it. So if we did do the improvements that were required to compact and maintain that, that trail, which is actually both sides of the road.
Right.
Then, yeah, we, in my opinion, we would now, it's ours.
So as rutted out as it is, we're better off just leaving it alone? And I guess this is back to the whole circulation. This is all the circulation in Norco Ridge Ranch, and it's a main trail.
Yeah, I mean, are we better off leaving it alone? I mean, I don't want to leave any of our trail system alone. I mean, I'd like to see it all get improved, but this is one of dozens and dozens of segments that really need to be, need attention. This is just one of many areas. The good thing about this area is, at least that's curb and gutter, and it can easily, you know, we can go in, in theory, and spend dollars and compact it, put material in and try to maintain it. But it's, actually, I'm sorry.
That's always been troubling for a long time, and I don't know if there's any way to push that or not, to have that trail completed.
And my understanding was part of the second phase of that original development, which obviously is not going to happen anytime soon, that I'm aware of. So this was kind of one of those things they were going to do at that next time, when they built these homes in these hill areas. It just didn't get done. We have accepted and are responsible for this trail here, plus this road segment. And basically, because this is a cut-through road, we maintain this road. Even though we didn't officially accept it, we maintain it, because our community uses it. So if something happens on that road, I maintain it.
Even though we haven't accepted it?
Yeah, because basically, it's, it's a, it's a required, I mean, it's a pivotal road for fire and emergency response, we have to have that road. Whether we accept it or not officially, it's something we need to maintain. And others versus their property are going, "Well, put a gate there, a gate there, you can't come in." That's not a positive thing. So we recognize, we just need to maintain it. So when things occur, but we do work with the property owner now, he's very aware, when there's debris or material that there's littered in their property, which is either side of these hills, we call them, they go pick it up. If there's graffiti on the rocks, we cite them, they go clean it up.
What sort of way to further that conversation, as you have it, with the roads, that you could do that with the trails?
Yeah, I mean, I think
On both sides?
I think if we choose, elect to touch it and, and improve it, you're not going to get an objection from the property owner, I don't believe. But my general opinion is, as soon as we touch it, it is ours, as far as liability.
Let it go.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to kind of answer that one. He doesn't pay any LMD fees for those, that area, that trail. And that's who's maintaining those trails, is out of the LMDs. So if he's not paying anything, then he's going to get service that none of the rest of us get up there in the LMDs.
Well, that's why I would say it would be done by Public Works, which doesn't do the LMD areas up there.
Correct. That's done by Brightview and the owners, the property owners up there. So, I mean, I know that I use that road, that's how I get back into Riverside. And, but that's, along that trail there, the property owner isn't paying any fees, like the rest of us do that live up there, to maintain that trail. And it would be real, you know, if he put in some money for it, that would be nice. That's my point on that one. I'm going to pinpoint on, now that I figure this out, P-2 on your little map? I just need clarification or anything else. See that, I'll go down. Okay, see that Pinto-Viceroy area right there?
Mm-hmm.
And, and I, this goes back to your backyard trails. Did you know there's a backyard trail all along the back wall between North and Pinto?
You're talking about this here?
Nope. Down, 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 down. Right there.
Oh.
Right there, right on that north side of that wall that you just put, that you just painted.
Yeah, going along this, this segment here?
No.
I know it's not showing, but, oh, backyard trail right there?
No, it's, see where Pinto is?
Uh-huh.
It's those homes?
Right.
All along the back of that Pinto, there is a trail there.
Behind the wall?
Behind the wall.
Okay.
And all those people there, and, and the reason I'm bringing this up is, that's a trail that can't be used anyway. And those are things that we, and maybe the commission, are looking at, is, what are we going to do with those? Are we going to let the, let that property owner have them back? Because you can't drive, I mean, there's, they were created so that people could ride their horses in the back and access out.
Okay.
But I believe there's a trail in the front anyway.
Yeah, there's on, on North.
No, I'm talking on Pinto.
Right, but there's, yeah, there's a trail here on, on Pinto.
So
And you're talking about the trail, is it over here somewhere, behind that wall?
The trail is right behind that wall. Over those people that live there on Pinto Lane, there is a trail behind their house that's sitting there. And that's what I'm getting at, is those are something that maybe in the future, you look at this, and we can clarify that, and what are we going to do with trails like that?
Okay.
And that one, I just know exists. I don't know how many other exist throughout the city, but every one of those homes back there, and there's a couple more that actually people use, as you can see where the road is, there's another trail that runs the backside, it's similar to the one that runs on the backside of Pinto, as it curves up and goes up there.
Here?
No, it's back, the red ones, your red ones. Some of those are backyard trails.
Okay.
So those are the ones that, either they're functional, or they're not functional. That's what I'm getting at on that one.
Okay.
So those, either we give the property back to the property owner, if we can't, if they can't access it, because people have built their cross fences back on some of those.
Yeah, well, in those types of situations, we first need to find out whether it was anything that was ever dedicated as part of their, their documents, whether it was just a, a trail that was part of their homes and not for public use. Again, we always want to look at that, find out what was done.
And that's exactly what they're, it's really right at the back of their properties, rather than the front.
Yeah.
So those are things that we, I mean, the bottom liners are there, they're asked to maintain them, but
Right.
It's a, for the width of their property and the depth, so some of them are 10, 12 feet wide, let them have their property back, if we don't even, just maybe something to look at on this, as you, like you said, a living document. And then I'm going to go back to, now that we have the standards, and Brian, step in, if you need to. The state, in their infinite wisdom, and through SB 1, decided to throw not only street repair into this thing, but trail repair and, and that type of things, walking trails. And that's why I'm, I'm glad we call these pedestrian equestrian, to help maintain the funding. Is there an ability now, now that you have these standards, because I'm sure that's what we needed to produce, to go through there and look at securing some of this money for these trails?
We have, Brian and I have met with, I think it's WR cog, and, and their representatives, they have consultants, to look at those revenue sources. I don't believe they identified anything specific in SB 1 that we could use, but they were looking at other sources that do qualify for other state grants, that would, because of the trail designation. Do you have anything to add on that, Brian? But I know we're looking at that.
And what we're looking at right now is RPI, which would fund some of our trails and improvements, and including possible stage, staging areas. So that's one of the fund, through the rep from WR cog, that's, we're working with them on the evaluation of, we're not eligible with this, but we'd be eligible in the next cycle, it looks like, for funding in those areas.
And that's throughout the city, or just the hills?
Well, it's really where we designate where those areas are. One of the areas we looked at was along River Drive and some other areas where they really needed improvement and that type of thing, and trying to work on what that trail would be, look like. They're right now doing an evaluation of our community to see where those funds would be, where we would be eligible in certain areas for those funds. So based on that, we, we would look at it. The challenge on some of the trails that are eligible for or are grants, they have to be multipurpose trails. So wherever we have a trail, we need to also put a bike route or bike trail, either a Class 1, 2, or 3.
And that kind of goes back to what Robin was saying about the bicycles. When I used to tend the Southern California Association of Government, they were very happy to give out awards and money to people that put on those multipurpose trails. And that's what, that's what they did, because they were marked for pedestrians, not necessarily equestrians, but definitely for pedestrians and bicycle designation. So if we could, I don't want to lose that part of that, if we get an ability to include our equestrian trails with that.
Some of those difficulties that they pointed out was, again, some of the bicycle trails, meaning you have a designated trail along the street edge, so we, some of those trails that we'd like to upgrade, we don't have enough road width to accommodate a bike trail.
Right.
Bike path. Also, some of the requirements that potentially kick us out is, is some of them, they want bioretention swales in the trail system, which we don't have room to do that. And we don't have retention in the first place, we're on bedrock, you know, so it, but those are things that California is looking for, is continually preserve and contain, have these bioretention areas. So some of those are difficult. So, but they're going to look at that, see what could be done. We've asked them to come back and give us a full report of the potential grants we could do, and we'll figure out, maybe in some areas, we can work in, in that area.
And the, the one thing about those fundings is it will, I think it'll allow us to have a grid that allows us where the eligibility where funding is available for us, and where those areas that would be actually multipurpose trails or connections could be an improvement done. So it, it, most, my experience has been that wherever you're going to receive, particularly in the state of California, trail grant money, you're going to have to make a multipurpose trail. It's going to have to include equestrian, bicycle, pedestrian. And our, our PE trail already accommodates that, but we could expand on that. We could also do reconstruction of trails. So sections that may be more deteriorated could be identified, that are possibly soft shoulder trails could be then identified to be bridle trails, based on the standards that Chad has presented to you tonight. So there, that eligibility does exist, along with that. And, and depending on the way the grant is, we can get Class 3 in parts of the city with the smaller width of roads. However, at some point, you have to transition into that Class 2 or 1 area. So we've been lucky to get some of the funding, and Class 2 does meet most of the qualifications. So it, I think the work that this group is going to do for us is, will be of benefit for us, particularly when we're out seeking for funds, and they will assist us in that.
Well, now that we have something written, this helps out.
Yes. Oh, absolutely.
And then a final thing. You mentioned the hills, and the, and not, not the Norco Hills, but the, don't we use CDC crews to maintain those? Because you said they weren't maintained.
Up, up in the Norco Hills, up in the trails?
Yeah, above Ingalls, I've seen the CDC.
But we, we will do some work, but it's, the only thing we can do in there is really, we do fuel modification. And we go through annually and do fuel modification. That's about all we can do. We can go in and take an existing trail that is part of that conservation area, and we can do some rut filling if it's on site, can't import anything. We can do some work in that particular area. However, most of all the work we do in the open space or the Norco Hills has to deal with fuel modification.
Okay, so we can't have Scott load up sandbags, put on these guys' backs, and throw it in there?
No, that area is, it has some pretty specific rules to it.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anybody else have any, more questions, staff? Public comments? Thank you, Chad.
Bonnie Slager.
Chad, you want to get your computer before she, we get knocked off accidentally? Thank you. In a way, accidents.
Councilman Newton, I know that paying a city council member doesn't pay real well, but since you're on a private road, you could start charging us a toll when we ride through there, if you want to.
That's a great idea.
Little extra income.
I
Oh, okay, but bill pays double. And the Disney horses are free, too. After sitting through all of this, I was really kind of saddened by this, because there aren't as many trails as I thought that we had. And there's a lot of places I thought were trails and aren't. And a couple of you brought up that you can't really have a system of trails with the significant gaps that we have. And I know that when we were talking about this, I'd say, "Well, that's a trail," for instance, on Mountain, "because there's a sign there that says, 'No parking on the trail.'" Well, they say, "No, it's not a trail." And I said, "But there's a trail sign there." Well, then the next time I go by, the trail sign is gone, so there's some kind of little sign thieves out that are stealing these "No parking on the trail" signs after I say, "Well, it must be a trail, because there's a sign there." Anyway, I know that you're going to go ahead and approve this, but my challenge to you, because every place I've lived, I've seen trails go away, and so I'm really adamant about our trails existing here. So my challenge to you is, a year from now, I'd like to see more trails in this city instead of less. I'd like to see Hillside behind the high school be a trail. That's a significant gap. As you mentioned, up on Valley, Mountain Avenue needs to have a trail there. To my knowledge, there's always been a trail on Mountain between Second and First, and I'm told now there is not. River Drive, some of these things, so that we actually have a system, and I don't have to pay a toll to get through by Mayor, by Greg Newton's house. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Bill Naylor?
Good evening, Bill.
Good evening again. I'm not going to throw any zingers at you this time. I know I have in the past sometimes, when we've had proposals come forward. I really do support the basic plan that is presented here tonight, as well as the Streets, Trails and Utilities Commission voted to approve this, too. I really think it is a great start for something that we've been needing for years and years and years. And I really do want to pat everybody on the back that has had effort in putting this thing together. There have been some good concerns raised tonight by councilmen and even Bonnie, about trail connectivity and such. I would like to challenge the city to approve what we've got now, but direct streets and trails, to look at some way, and maybe with John's help, of looking at the private streets and see if we can't develop some kind of an agreement with the property owners to do that. Because again, I've kind of been told, I haven't really looked into it too much, but I've been told that there are places that that does happen. In this area that you're talking about, this street, anywhere where there is a right-of-way for a street, you usually have some shoulder area. And if, if we do have a shoulder area, we're, I would think we're responsible for that, so it wouldn't be impossible to put a soft shoulder trail through there. But I don't know. I think this is something that the Streets and Trails and city should be looking at in the future. Not taking anything away from what we've currently got proposed tonight, I'd like to see this get approved. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
That concludes public comments.
Okay, I'll bring it back to council. Kevin? You're looking right at me, you've got a question.
I don't have any questions, just some comments. I can remember back in the 60s, when the battle was to keep the trails on both sides of the street, and it was humongous. Bonnie, when we did our infrastructure study, we found out we had like 80 miles of trail. So I'm happy to find out we had 20 more miles. I have the same concerns in terms of the connectivity. I'm a little bit worried about that. I totally get the private streets, you're not supposed to ride on East Street. There are people that live on that street, that if you ride on that street, they are very upset. And I don't know about the rest of them. I would imagine if you permitted that, you'd have to have everybody on the street sign off on it, and I would imagine they would want us to accept all liability for that. So I have concerns about that. I also totally understand, I've seen trails go away but not come back. But that said, Brian, you probably remember, the first time we worked on trails was 1997 for the old animal, old Bruin probably remembers, remember the, the committee from hell, the Animal Keating Ad Hoc Committee? And we started talking about trails. This is a great start. I'm really impressed with the technology, it's fantastic. I have some real hope that this time, third time's a charm, that we're going to have some purchase and maybe find purchase and maybe find a way to actually find out if the residents in Norco really want to take care of their trails. And that's what it's going to come down to. So I'm really, really pleased with this. Again, having been involved in all the other ones, this is fantastic. I love the fact, now, are we going to have access to this? Will this be online that we can like click, I want to see, okay, can I ride here? Or is this going to be just something that's in-house?
The map itself will be available. I don't know yet, I have to talk with the consultant whether it's going to be a static map where you can't turn things on or off, or if it'll just be where you can actually switch things on or off.
Can we turn things on and off? Does that technology exist?
Well, it'll be up to the GIS consultant because how they do their app to show this map.
Well, this is fantastic, and I'm really pleased, and I look forward to, I think it's a great, I would prefer to review it every six months. And especially until we get the funding going and all that kind of stuff, I would like to look at it. So thank you very much, it's fantastic.
Greg?
Once again, good job. I thought our, we could get our trail maps on the, the Norco app.
Yes.
I guess that, we're going to make this a Matt question. Can we do this on our phone, on the Norco app?
I think he's looking right now on the app.
Of course, that means Matt, you have to ride with all the riders.
So there is currently a horse trail map that needs to be updated on the mobile app.
All right. Thank you. Anything else, Greg? Okay. Bruin?
Yeah, Chad, I want to thank you and your staff and the commission for doing this. This has needed to be updated for a long time. But I think you're right about not putting the private, the streets on the private, I mean, the trails on the private streets on the map, so people don't look and they think they can go down there and all they're going to do is make a U-turn and come back. But as far as that trail on Mountain, I've been told ever since I've been here for 32 or three years that there was a trail on the Egg Ranch side of the property. And I know that they had some drainage culverts or ditches or something in there that they told us years ago not to ride down there because in two weeks they were going to widen that street and fix the horse trail in. And I've always been, it's always been my thoughts and everybody else that was ever around here that that was actually a horse trail on that west side of Mount Avenue. So when did it disappear? Two weeks ago?
It began, again, this is all recollective staff, and the main person I deal with is Terry. Terry's been here for 30 years, and he swears up and down that's never been a trail. He was told to go out there one day, put a sign up there by a former councilman, just because they were tired of seeing trucks parked in the, in the parkway. I have no definitive information that ever defined it as a trail, that it was ever developed as a trail. So all I can tell you is right now, what we currently have, it's a dirt shoulder that is no shape or could, to be a, even a soft shoulder trail. There is zero done on it. So I can't sit here and defend whether it should or shouldn't be. The reality is, is there's hope in the near future, hopefully, with the project that's developing there. But there's going to be all kinds of brand-new trails surrounding that entire property. So hopefully it becomes a moot issue. But for right now, for what we are, Terry has never maintained that trail, he's never touched it to do anything with it, other than try to deal with parking issues that have occurred up and down that area. So I'm not sure beyond that to what to say. Other directors told me it's not been a trail, but they've put stuff out at a behest of prior managers, just put something out, tells people, gets people to stop parking in the area, because trucks would park there, et cetera, et cetera. It was their quick gap to deal with the issue. So I, again, I don't, it's not a desire to not have something there to show it's a trail. I just have no information from my own sources that says it's a trail.
Because one of the things that they were talking about back then was that, I think that speed limit on that street's 40 miles an hour, is that correct?
If so.
And that they would repair that trail, they would fix it up, when you can get across those water crossings down there, and put a safe fence where people could go from first to second, second to first. So is there any way when this development comes along that we can put a trail on Mountain?
Oh, sure, the developer will, will do whatever we tell them to do, to be honest, when it comes to the trails. And they've already supported, if need be, they'll put trails around the entire property.
Well, it definitely needs to have one there for connectors for that side of town over there. But unlike Bonnie, I was always told there was a horse trail there and...
Yeah, I envision the discussion, because we've already, they've already had a couple of public meetings about that area. And it's been interesting, when it was stuck, Stuck elected to recommend that a trail be around the entire property, including Mountain. We went to a community meeting that they had for the local residents, and the first one we were at, residents were adamant that a trail doesn't make sense on Mountain, it's too dangerous, especially if the little trucks are going to be. The next meeting, it was flip-flop, they weren't sure. So I envision when it comes around and they actually have meetings with planning commission and the council, et cetera, it's going to be a very healthy discussion about Mountain specifically, whether there should be a trail there or not. Because there will be a developed trail system, certainly on Second Street, Pacific, and on First Street. So there's connectivity there. So folks on First Street near Target can get somewhere on First Street and go to the system. But it's been interesting for me, as just observer, of having people for and against trails on that area. Personally, for me, I'm very concerned about the traffic flow with the trucks, having one on Mountain.
Well, I think the Streets and Trails Commission, and there's some of them in here tonight, I think that when they work on this, that they can put a connector horse trail there. They could also have the authority to recommend that we reduce the speed limit on that street. I mean, it's 60 mile an hour almost up anyway with the 25 mile an hour sign, but I think that, I don't think trucks need to be running 40 mile an hour on any street in town, even though the, the small school bus is over speed, but that's a different, different project. But I think that the commission, when they do that, they can please the neighborhood over there and put a trail on that street and recommend that we reduce the speed limit on it and make it safe. Thank you.
Just so you know, the commission's official opinion so far, because they've already met with the developer, is to put a trail on Mountain and all the way around the property. Yes, sir.
Robin? All right. I'm going to, the Mountain, when I was on the Streets and Trails Commission, that trail existed when the Egg Ranch was being talked about for the warehouse property. It was a bone of contention at that time because, and the developer was told, no, you will keep that trail there. So guaranteed, there was a trail there for years. So I'm kind of like the rest of it, the private road thing is one issue that we probably, the circulation, the continuation of the trails. We don't build trails. The reason we avoid the single trail on a cul-de-sac because they don't go anywhere is, you want to make a round and ride up and ride out. As far as, and that's what the circulation was for, so I'm, I'm in favor of doing that. I like your report, I'm going to commend you guys for doing this, it took a lot of time and effort. I think this, I don't like it coming back six months because I think it just, you make busy work, but if it comes back annually, coming back with improvements, this is a living document. And for as far as I'm concerned, if you want to, you got to make sure this comes back annually, and then you can work on those things specifically, what we addressed here tonight, I know you kept your notes on it. But I'll entertain a motion from anybody to approve this as is and come back in, and make sure they come back annually with it. And a first and a second? And a vote?
Okay, please vote.
Good job. And we're going to take a 10-minute break as, as we do. All right, um, 10 minutes. All right, we got to resume this. And moving on to 65B, Chad, the Trail Improvement Project on California Avenue, Trail Fencing Projects at Multiple Locations.
Okay, so as the council knows, since the beginning of the year, the fiscal calendar, fiscal year, we had virtually proposed some projects for trail maintenance. And basically, those were all trail fencing projects. During the budget process, we, council elected to hold off on any designated project because they had a desire to do some improvements on California for various reasons. And the direction was to look at that, reconsider that, and look what would come up. We did an analysis on that, we reviewed that analysis with Stuck as far as the appropriateness to doing repairs and upgrades on California at this time. And what we came back with and approval recommendation from Stuck Committee was to wait on that California for various reasons, primarily is the impacts related to the storm drain systems that have not yet been installed, both on Crestview and on California, to mitigating the flooding that is, that does occur on an annual basis and impacts those trails on California, running them out, and also impacting residential homes. After that presentation, council did, once again, still have a desire to do something with California and wanted it to review again, consideration to do California. Ultimately, instead of taking it back to Stuck Committee, since we've already really reviewed it and the, and the conditions or the issues hadn't changed, the, Billy Fitt was warranted to go back to Stuck Committee to talk about it again. Instead, rather recognizing this is really something the council wants, just to come up with the plan and allow, and discuss that plan of what would be involved to do improvements on California and get feedback from the council and direction as far as what those improvements you want to see. So in reviewing California, and it's in your staff report, we looked at, again, the assumption is we're going to go through and use the available funds, which right now is $220,000 for trail improvements, to go through and redo California as best we can. And that includes removing the existing fence, regrading the entire trail area, the 18-foot trail, because that's our standard, is 18 feet to have it for the new upgraded trails, remove all impediments out of the way, trees, hydrants, anything, including some road improvements that we need to be done. So, and I'll review that road improvement because it's a critical one, I want you to understand. The, so in general, the trail fencing, pretty straightforward, is replacing all the trail fencing, putting all the appropriate gaps where they need to be for driveways, et cetera. We would probably end up, well, we haven't decided yet, but we may end up using the court crews to remove the fencing like we did on North, or we may just end up having the contractor do it just to get it done. It just depends availability of CRC crews, but, so we assumed in our factor of doing that, that the removals were being done by the contractor. So there could be savings, assuming that, that the city does it on their own. And we've estimated at that point it'd be about $60,000 to do the, the trail fencing. The, and that's due to the new vinyl fencing. As far as the other improvements, again, if we're going to design this trail from, where it's right now is a soft shoulder trail, to an engineered trail, that, to the current standard, that includes removing all the impediments. So removing all the current trees that are in the trail right now, a bunch of eucalyptus trees are in that area, which again, eucalyptus is not in our current approved urban forest plan, so certainly we wouldn't replant those if they existed. They're, according to Terry, they're a maintenance nightmare, very brittle, stuff falls all the time, so it wouldn't be a bad thing if they were removed as far as long-term maintenance. But that's one of the things I want to make sure as we get in these new discussions about building new trails in our infrastructure, this is going to be a common theme about what do we do with already exists? Are we going to create a new trail standard that allows these items to stay? Or are we going to build to the standard that we've adopted and currently have approved? So we've thrown these in there, and I'm going to want your feedback whether you want them done or not. But removal of the trees is about $47,000, because there's 47 trees that are in the trail, the 12-foot right-of-way. The other impediments include that there's actually a break in the trail system, and I'll show you that. Currently at California and Seventh, the trail system here, going north to south, it comes along down here and then detours off through this property that's at that corner. Well, the important thing about this corner, so you have a trail system that goes through here, we don't own that trail, that's private. That is actually within that property, and let me go ahead and turn this on here, there's the parcel map right there. So you can see that the current trail system, so this square here, our trail is actually in their property. We don't, we haven't gotten and are aware of any dedication that was provided when that, when that property originally developed. So we currently have this pocket here for right-hand turns that we've done. So our trail system should just go straight and then matching the current trail system. So part of what I'm recommending, in order to avoid, again, going through private property, is actually tear this back out, don't have the right-hand turn pocket, we'll redo the corner, and put the new trail in this location. We'll remove the existing curb that's in this area here, in the fencing, and then put the new trail fencing in through here, do the new corner, and now it matches in this length. Right now, on that corner, if we're to do that work and avoid our riders going through private property, is to, it's about, and this is a really conservative estimate, it's about $50,000. Realistically, when all said and done, and, so we threw everything in kitchen sink that may need to be done on that to do the work, it's probably going to be half that cost. But I want to at least give you a scale, depending on what happens, that we need to do. Again, you're just tearing out asphalt, you're, you're putting back in the DG, you're adding the trail fence, you're doing the new radius here. So again, Dominic threw in everything that possibly could happen. Realistically, some of those things are going to be wiped out, but I just wanted to give you a conservative estimate. There's another section that has a similar issue, much smaller, but it's still an issue. And that's down at Green Tree. So here, we have the right-of-way. Problem is, is the riders come through this gentleman, this resident's property, because the trail fencing stops here and the trail fencing starts here, they're angled through this gentleman's, this president's, excuse me, property. And again, to try to avoid that, we can either fix the road and, again, return, get rid of the extra turn radius, or turn lane that's here, it's really not needed, or we can just extend it a little bit farther down, remove a couple of trail fencing segments here, probably put a trail fencing perpendicular to the road right here, so basically people can't go this way, and they're forced to come through the trail, through the air we have. Much smaller improvement we can do, Dominic's current proposal, Mountain, that was 40,000, that's why it's the 90,000 total for improvements, if we went the whole way. But we don't have to do that because of the fact we do have this, it's just a small minor modification. Again, it's just being technical on reviewing it at my level, I'm having people come across property lines to use the trail system. Whether that person has any grudge about it is not what, I haven't even investigated whether they care, it's simply pointing out how we currently have our system designed. So those are the two street-related improvements. Again, we can change them and scale whatnot, but I at least wanted to give you that. And then the last part is really just the money we'd use for bringing in DG, adding its trail system, leveling it off best we can, because we do have issues in this trail where the properties are below the trail level. So we do have, and that's one of the issues we pointed out, drainage, is you have the street level, you have the trail, which is already a little bit rutted below the trail, the street level, and then you have the home. So we're going to have to balance out really whether we raise that trail up to street level, or we actually keep it below street level, and it will be level, it will be compacted, but it's going to be below street level. So, you know, and that could be, depending on the area, to an inch, to several inches, depending, because again, we're trying to be able, future-wise, be able to go through there and maintain that trail effectively. We don't want it necessarily angling in to the property because it becomes harder to maintain. But again, we can do that. So what I'm interested in is understanding from the council's perspective, I've given you the kitchen sink approach, if we do it. What do you want to see? Whatever we don't use or we don't spend, I'm hoping you will approve the other trail fencing projects that we had previously recommended, minus Sixth Street, that we would like to see get done, at least replacing some trail fence, that the Stuck Committee recommended, including a small segment on Reservoir that has yet to be completed. We've done some trail fencing related to the trail fencing between Willow and Third. We've done some fencing for most of that section, we need a small section to complete going up to Willow, and that section will be done. So everything will be white vinyl fence, I've already had residents ask me, why didn't you take the fence all the way up? Well, it was just part of our storm drain project, we went through those properties. We need, we want to finish that at this point. So that is one area I'd like to kind of finish off and see that road is done. So with that, on behalf of the answer questions you have, I'm looking direction from you, what you would like to see happen on Mountain as far as those improvements related to what you would like to see happen on Mountain as far as those improvements related to what we've shown you here today.
On California.
I'm sorry, California, sorry, I'm still thinking about Mountain again.
Throw it. Any questions?
He answered the two questions I had about the, the intersection improvements there at Seventh and Green Tree.
Okay.
Thank you.
Robin?
I'm here.
Kevin?
So where the old Circle K is, the corner of Seventh and, wasn't that purchased and wasn't the person, I mean, if they were going to put in a business there or tear down the building or whatever they're supposed to do, wouldn't they be required to put in the trail system? Couldn't we get them to do that? And is there still a project onboard there? I mean, right now, it's just a big eyesore.
Yeah, I don't have an update regarding what's potentially going to happen with that property.
Steve, is there anything active there right now?
No, we periodically get requests from the property owner and interest about doing things, and then we don't hear from them for months, so right now, nothing.
I mean, basically, that building can't even be habitated, can it?
When they were looking at it the last time, it could be rehabilitated, but as it sets and, and...
With the kitchen and all that stuff that they wanted to put in, they could do all that?
Yeah, but they didn't go very far, so...
Right, I mean, they didn't even want to pave the asphalt in the front, correct?
I mean, one of those solutions, again, if, if the property owner's willing to dedicate that portion that's already a trail to us, then it just becomes city property and, and his property gets a little bit smaller, but it's already there.
Nobody asked him?
Not at this point. I mean, again, we have to approach them to find out as that's a potential solution.
And then in terms of the trees, would there be trees replanted for those 40-some trees?
That's part of the issue on what we want to do, because obviously, if we remove the trees and we do it the current standard, it would now be a six-foot parkway, which right now, I think it mirianders between three and six at different points, where the trail fencing would be. So if there's a six-foot parkway, yes, then yes, we could plant trees in that area. So we now need to recognize we're going to be instead of three feet off of road edge, where it pretty much prohibits parking, because it's unsafe, now if we have a six-footer, in some areas, it's going to encourage people to park along there. So part of what I would recommend is, we make no parking allowed on that side of, of California to prohibit that. So if we do go and do the new standard, we want to recognize, so yes, in here, I did include costs of tree planting, because I wanted to have that discussion of what we would do, but yes, that's something we could add in, there's funding for that as far as available, we just wouldn't do any potentially trail fence replacement.
How big would the trees be? Because I got a hunch a lot of people would be upset losing those trees.
Well, per our urban forest plan, they have to be at least a 15-gallon tree, and that's what we, our minimum to start with. And, and that's the reality of any of our tree plantings, there are probably going to be 15-gallon trees that we start with. Part of the issue is, again, the obligation is on the resident to water those trees, so we need to talk to every single one of them to say, are you willing to irrigate these and have irrigation system come out and irrigate those trees? Some of them may say, I don't want to even deal with it, so you, you know, where will we put trees? So we have to have that discussion with them about, do you want one? Here's the types we can choose from, but also we try to make it kind of uniform through there, since it's to be a whole new tree system through that, that length of California. So we'd want to be reasonable about not putting all kinds of different trees for trimming purposes, they're all, they have different needs at different times. But we would need to talk with them, because again, they're obligated to water that tree. We don't want to just put a tree and say, you need to take care of this. That's not how our urban forest plan has been developed, it's, it's a partnership. We put them in, you take care of them, make sure they, they continue to grow, and we will do the maintenance at a certain point when it gets above eight feet, we take care of that.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Greg?
Back in the Circle K at Seventh, if you were to take out that right-turn pocket, what's that going to do to the traffic in the morning?
It's going to...
Is it going to stack it up further?
It's going to stack up, yeah. Which is a positive and negative, in that it slows people down, but it aggravates the residents who can't get out of their property. And we recognize that right away, and that's one of the things we want to point out, is that it's a give and take of what we're trying to do, we, because we've heard both issues, too many people speeding, but too many people on the road in the first place and I can't get out of my house.
I think one of the reasons that we wanted to shift this over to California was, one, the trail is in disrepair, and it gets a lot of equestrian traffic, but also to help the residents out that live on California. So if we lose that right-turn pocket, the potential exists, it's going to be harder for them to get out of their driveways.
Right.
And I would think at this point, unless you were to do a whole traffic study that I would lay off on whoever's going to develop that corner, just let it be until it gets developed, and either have it dedicated or study it further at that time. So that's one of my concerns on that pocket. My other concern is, I'm not going to even think about removing 47 trees. I understand what you're saying about as far as maintaining an engineered trail, and you just want a straight shot, but I just can't buy that. I think that impact is too great, and to come back with a tree replacement program with a 15-gallon tree in lieu of a, a mature tree that is going to be a stick for the next 20 years. So I'm, I'm fine with the improvements to the trail, my horse can go around trees, all right, and I think most of them in town can do that. But to remove that quantity of trees that aren't diseased, that maybe just need a little bit of trimming, to make your maintenance a little easier, I'm not going to support that.
Yeah, I totally understand, like I said, that's why I just want to point out, I'm going off a standard that we have that we're trying to go to, and it's just finding out how are we, how do we give and take on that?
Existing conditions. You use it all the time. That's all for now.
Kevin?
The, the old Circle K was built in the mid-'70s. We had a pretty active trail system going, I think that's when it was built. Are we certain that, that concrete walkway is legal? Now, I know there was a lot of people giving property, giving, there's all that stuff on California, but can we find out, make sure that that was even illegal? Because it seems strange we allowed them to put it in during that era, because that's when we were really, trails, 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 true?
Yeah.
Actually, I think it was in the late '60s, that Circle K.
It might have been, but if we could find out, because, because maybe it's not legal. Just a question.
I'm not as nice as Greg. Forty-seven trees. I did, those trees got pruned, and it's pretty open now. You take 47 of those trees out, and you'll have every resident in California in here wanting your job and our job, to be honest with you. Those are mature trees that have been there for years, and they add a lot to the driving into that city. Right now, they're, they're, they've been pruned severely, and yeah, they don't have a lot of foliage in them. But my county is, one tree is probably in the way on the north end, and two need to be trimmed severely because they hang over. But to remove 47, and that's, that's a butchering job. And when I see reports like this, and no fault to you, Chad, because I used to do stuff like too, if I didn't want to do it, I came up with numbers like this, that said, I don't want to do it. And that's what this looks like to me. I don't want to do this, I'm giving you the worst-case scenario, so I don't, I don't want to do this project. That's my personal opinion on it. As far as those turn lanes, I'm kind of agreeing with Kevin, I think that sidewalk you're going to find is probably built on city property, was probably approved way back then. And the problem with California, and no offense to earlier council that were doing in the, at the 2000, but they did dumb things to that, to California. They took away a lot of the roadway, and then they give it back. And that's why we got a mess. Everybody else has had to play catch-up on it. And as far as I'm concerned with Evergreen and those, and those trails, one of the reasons people can't get out of their residence, and one of the reasons that people use California is the cut-through. And the reason you, how you stop cut-through is you make it unbearable for them to drive on it. And maybe they'll find another way to use our city to cut through the traffic. I wouldn't be opposed to putting a three- and four-way stops at every one of those stop sign, intersections, make them slow down.
Toll Road.
Toll Road, yeah. You know, but a private California street, so we don't have to worry about a trail on it, huh? But that's not going to solve our problem, and it's not going to solve the problem for those residents on California. This may be one of those things, as you said, we just approve the trail standards. Unfortunately, we have a street in a situation that we have to fix, and yes, it doesn't fit into the trail standard that we've just approved. But I don't want to be responsible for not doing anything in California and having some equestrian kept by a car because of our lack of doing something. Yes, I know the trail fence is not designed to keep the horse on, in the trail, but it is a barrier. And the barrier, at least for the vehicles driving down there, and a barrier for the horse, is something. And a lot of riders use that as, that's their, their protection, that's what they think it is. So, I mean, we got to do something with California, but I'm not in favor of cutting any trees down at all on that street. And as far as, if it was up to me, I'd grind those turn lanes and give them back to the trail. You know, I'll make it uncomfortable for, for vehicle operators to go through there, if it means saving an equestrian or a pedestrian crossing the street, making it safe. But I drove that, and I agree with you, there's a mess. It's, it's where the, the lineages, as it goes through, and all the encroachments that have been done, and property lines, it's a mess. With that, I'll, any more questions before public, any cards?
Mr. Mayor, real quick, I just want to comment regarding your statement. This effort was not done to dissuade you from doing something, it was a genuine effort to show you, if we're going to do improvements, what each of them could be. And I looked at it simply recognizing, if we're going to improve our trails, my target is the engineered trails, and this is what's involved. And, because I wanted to point out, the real realities of what we're asking, or potentially doing, is significant impact and not palatable probably to the public. But I, so I purposely put this on you, so you understood, if we're going to go to this level, here's what, everything that should be done to achieve that, and here's the cost. I had zero expectation that this council's going to approve much of this, because of really the impact. But that's what we're going to face going on in the future as we look at these other trails in the same area on that side of the city, all have the same impact. So we're going to have to look at a alternate standard of what we want to achieve as far as when we change the trail fencing, get that, at least that done, what the surfacing is going to be, and how we effectively get in there, because California and every other, every other street is totally different. Some of the trees are in the middle of the trail, so those will need to go. But the ones off the side, maybe we decide, look, we keep them there, we're not going to touch those, but try to have at least a minimum eight-foot path so we can go through and maintain that. That's part of the discussions we want to have, to recognize, there's going to be an alternate standard, and we can't do always an engineered trail. But I want to make sure in the end, that as staff, we know what our minimum requirements do for that type of trail and how we're supposed to maintain it. So this was not meant to be me saying, well, I don't want to do this, I'm going to make these numbers ridiculous so they reject it, I was simply pointing out, each of these things would technically be required to do that standard. I want us to all come to a plan, you help direct me, here's what we really want done. If it's only the trail fence, I'll, I just want to start something and get something done, because we've been chomping at the bit as a committee and staff to go do something on the trails. We've just had to go back and forth to get to this point, I'm hoping we can finally move forward to do something. And that's my goal on this.
All right, thank you. Welcome back, Bill.
Welcome, thank you. I'm not really quite sure where to begin here. I do strongly recommend that we take a look at doing something on California, and I don't really envy you in your position, because I know there's a lot of, what do I do, how do I do it without impacting other people? So let me start on a couple of things. First of all, I really think that the vinyl fence needs to go in along California, and I think it needs to go back six feet off of the, the street, so that you have a fence, you have a starting point to work with, with your other types of repairs. It will come over time, as Chad has indicated before to the STU committee, or commission, that you would be possibly doing some things with drainage control and things like that long-term. So if the fence was put where it's supposed to be, maybe you would be, would not have to do a lot of tearing out a fence to do some of that at future time. I do think that there are going to be a couple of trees that may have to be removed to make things so that it will flow, but 47 trees, I can understand, nobody really would want to give up those mature trees, although a lot of people do not like that type of tree. It is a real problem with breakage, limbs falling, things like that. The turn lane pocket at Seventh Street is an interesting prospect that you need to consider. I agree with you, it will slow down traffic on California, but you might have a side benefit. We've got a lot of complaints of people just barreling through on Seventh Street because they turn. Well, guess what? Now, if they had to come to a stop at that stop sign instead of jumping in that pocket and then making a quick right-hand turn, they might actually continue down to Calif, or to Sixth Street where they really should be going instead of cutting through the residential areas. It's, it's a possible advantage. I just would like to see something done here. I know I get continual requests from residents along there, please help us. And I think some of them are in the audience and want to talk about that, so I'll just get out of your way. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Jim Hammond Tree?
Evening.
Hi, Jim.
I've lived on California for 17 years now, and over the years, I've seen the trail, the street, the whole condition of that road just collapse. And right now, it's become a dangerous situation with all those gaps in the fence. We've got traffic now using the trail as passing lanes. I've seen a couple of really close calls with either pedestrians or equestrians, and I think it's just a matter of time before we have a real serious problem, there's somebody getting seriously hurt. But, so I really hope we press forward on this, get some fencing done, get some improvements done in California, don't allow it to keep deteriorating the way it has. And also, and if you could do something about that abandoned building that is horrible, it's an eyesore for the community, it's covered with graffiti most of the time, in fact, just called in because there's gang graffiti on it. But if you could do that and help us here on California, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Good evening. Council staff, how you doing? My wife and I, we've been residents here for 40 years on California. I call it the Speedway, okay? As Jim, I'm neighbor to Jim, and as he stated, how dangerous this street is. Okay, you guys came up with some concerns about trees. Yeah, there are some trees that could be removed, okay? Luckily, I live, we live on the east side, and majority of the trees that you'd be cutting down, et cetera, would be on the west side. But if you look at, you know, if you're looking at the sun, you know, by the time the sun's at 3 o'clock, it's behind the houses, okay? So there are, you know, so if you're saying, well, those trees could, you know, keep, keep it cooler, et cetera, et cetera, you know, it's not going to help the houses that are on these, on the west side of the street, okay? And I know a lot of those trees have been there a long, long time, but some of those temvescal pines, those are garbage trees, okay? You guys talking about eucalyptus, temvescal pines, they fall over, et cetera. Anyway, instead of taking out 47 trees, going $1,000 a tree, buy yourself a mobcat tractor that's a little bit skinnier, that you could use on alternative trails, and trails that are only five feet wide. There's an answer to that, okay? It's not just used in California, but it could be used in other special areas, and it's less than $47,000, okay? Cars don't know lanes, cars don't know stop signs. They mentioned about how you put more stop signs on the road, which I think is a great idea, put it on every corner. Toll lane, pay, I'm for that, okay? Whatever we can do, I'm about four houses down off of Seventh Street. Whatever we can do, I'm about four houses down off of 7th Street. I know what Circle K's looked like for years, okay? And that turn there, nobody stops at that stop sign. They make a right turn and they keep on going. Don't even stop, all right? So that's police enforcement. So somewhere, we need to have police enforcement on that road a lot better. It isn't happening. You mentioned about 40 miles an hour on Mountain. People do 50, and they get close to that stop sign, hey, they might stop, okay? But with the fencing, with the way that the trails are, we've got to do something. At Trails Committee, someone says, well, can't the horse riders use Pedley? It goes the same way. Hey, I live on California. I've got to use California to get up to the next street. A lot of people on horses have to use California to get up to the next street. We can't even get on our horses on California because of the traffic, because it scares the horses. My wife's been kicked off twice, okay? Ain't going to happen. We're not riding anymore because of that. Got to do something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that's all the cards on this item.
Thank you. Bringing it back. Robin, do you have anything else? All right, Berwin.
Yeah, I'll agree, we need to do something over there, but two things. I hate to cut down all those trees, because I know what kind of flack we caught when Edison was going through there, cutting trees down, and that was them, and we got the blame for it. But another thing I'm concerned about is the water runoff that comes off up there above Crestview. Now, we all know what comes down through the properties there on California and across that trail, and causes a big erosion problem. And I hate to spend a bunch of money customizing that trail material until we can do something about directing the flow of that water. If we had two or three places it could go, just in a storm drain down there or something, instead of coming right across the road and hitting into the horse trail there and washing out the material we're going to put in, that's just a waste of money. But I, I know something's got to be done, and like the gentleman just spoke, you know, I don't blame him for being leery about getting on his horse and trying to cross that road, because I don't know of any time of the day that traffic has lighted, lighted on there. And another thing, I know you've got to take out that right turn lane there on my 7th, but that's not going to slow traffic down. They're just going to cut through that driveway there, that abandoned store where the people dumped those abandoned motorhomes. They'll just make a right turn through that property there instead of going to stop sign anyway, so we have a problem there unless somebody buys it and blocks the driveway up. I don't see that happening, but that's just my thoughts. Thank you.
Robin.
Okay, so I went and drove the area after reading the staff report the other day and had to, it's hard to count trees on that street with the traffic, and they're right on your rear end. So I counted between 67 and 71 trees, and there's about four different varieties on the street. And reading the item we just covered, I thought Chad wants to clear the trails to go to standard, is what my original assumption was, because there are some of those trees that are in the trail, and some close or adjacent infringing on the trail, so to speak. So I got an idea of what, what your vision is by putting the two things together. My concern is taking 47 mature trees all at one time. And so my preference, just to give you the feedback for today, would be that we take those trees that are like smack dab in the middle of the trail that are, are issues, and hopefully that would lower that, obviously lower that number. And if we went to the five-foot or the six-foot trail or whatever, and remove trees as they become, you know, aged out at the end of their maturity, that kind of stuff, so it's a gradual process. I'm also in favor of putting the trail fence in, in that area, and taking out the right turn lanes and putting the trails back, and adding in the DG to level out the trails. So at this point in time, my, my biggest concern is with the removal of all, of the trees at one time. I think it's something that could probably be a little more systematic in looking at the age of trees and where they're at in the trail. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
I would think you have direction enough on the tree issue. On the fencing, I think we should go ahead and start working that in increments and baby steps. So I would support us moving forward with the, the new fencing, removal of old. Tread very carefully with the trees. But Berwin makes up a great point, and I was thinking about that whole 7th California and the Circle K that Steve needs to check on the validity of how that trail is offset, if it's dedicated, if it's not. And then I got thinking about, yeah, maybe it's better to take out that right turn pocket and put a no right turn sign, and then let Eric park somebody there and just write tickets, till Berwin brought up about they just cut through the, the Circle K. So I don't know what to do there. I don't know what type of direction to give you on that right turn pocket unless we can find out where we are with the Circle K. Maybe that can be blocked off to keep them from cutting through.
The...
But you're right about, until they abandon a motor home there, then we could just let that sit, and that would block it all.
I think, and it's something I'd have to talk with Steve about, and I guess I'd have to verify what the requirements of the city, since it's not an active commercial property, you know, if we did take back the right turn lane area, we could put trail fence all the way across, so you're not, you can't get in that area. However, if it's developed at some point, then they're going to have a driveway approach for that area. But it's something that'd be an active business, and people choosing to cut through there, again, that's unfortunately a business dilemma that some businesses have to deal with. I don't know if it's an actual violation of any particular driving code. If you go through a property and go through, so I'm not aware of that, but, yeah, I'm not sure how we deal with that as far as where I'm obligated, because there's a business there now that I have to maintain that gap for the driveway that's on California.
I like that idea. I mean, who cares? So I could go either way. If you wanted to get rid of that right turn pocket, as long as you closed off and access to an abandoned building, for the most part, that has no commercial use, like I said, I don't care. I mean, it wouldn't...
Yeah, like I said, I'm, I'm okay with it, I just want to make sure I'm not...
So that maybe will require a little further discussion that way.
Yeah, Steve and I can verify whether there's any legal issue with doing that as far as the property owner's rights to enter and egress their property. It's already been established.
Yeah, the only, the only thing which would, and it'd be easy to find out, the only potential impact would be if they had a recorded in their favor an access easement at that location. But ultimately, taking access from city streets is up to the city.
Right. Would like to ask, as far as clarification, it seems there's a general desire to do the improvement at California and 6th. Do you want to spend, I'm sorry, California and 7th, in doing that improvement, because that's related to Circle K? Do you want to do the one related to Green Tree all the way to the intersection, or just enough to have an effective way around that one property and then going into the Because again, I'm happy with both, I just want to make sure I'm doing what you would like to see done.
On that one little section, Chad, that you had on the map a while ago, and I know that it's been that way for years, where they come down there and they cut across that person's yard, and you wanted to put that one little section of trail fence. Do you have any idea how long that has been like that, Greg, or Kevin, or? It's been years since I had enough nerve to ride down that section of the trail I usually cut off on 7th. JT, do you know how long people have been using that to cut off? What's that?
Yeah. Been like that forever.
It's been like that since I've been here.
So, yeah, on this, on this project, again, that's why I wanted to kind of temper it down, we don't have to do the whole thing. We can extend this down a little bit, take two or three rails out. I can put a rail across here so people don't come across this area, and then extend this rail out, and they'll basically transition through here.
They actually right...
Through here?
Really where we put...
Yeah, we need to straighten it out while we're putting in the fences, if we're going to put the fence in.
Again, I just, with just to temper it, I could, because we already own the right-of-way, that's a good trail right there. I could extend it, you know, halfway down, and then wait people to transition through here, and we don't have to do a, a new improvement on the corner. Or again, I could do it all and just get it done, so I have no issue with that. I just want to at least make sure that I'm pointing out, there is another option besides doing the whole thing that we could put in, but I'm fine with doing the whole thing.
If you correct it now, and somebody else buys that property later on, they're not, they're not cutting anybody off of there. It's already corrected where you come around on the right part of the trail.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm fine with doing both the whole way. I just want to at least, this one has another option, but I'm fine with doing it the whole way.
Craig, do you have anything more?
Is there any, I would, I would be fine with correcting it in the proper manner, okay? But is there any future project that could snap at us? Flood control, anything on the horizon?
Well, again, what's going to happen is when Crestview gets done, and when our current California project gets done near 8th, we're going to look at, find out where still the gaps that Crestview didn't resolve, and we may come back through. The reality is, is most, most cases, we would do, you know, storm drains are going to be on the west side, usually at the streets is where we're going to catch that. The, and we'll do some on the, on the, on the east side, also trying to collect it before it gets across the road, but we do a combination. So could it impact it, potentially? But we would probably put that, if there's going to be any curb and gutter, probably a rolled curb, and we would do what you see in another place like Pedley. We have that inset of a storm drain where the actual right-of-way or the existing dirt is farther out in the street. We're not pushing the road back, we're just setting it back to the eventual property line. We would do it somewhere in between the trail fence, or the road edge and the trail fence, where there'd be that, any curb inlets to collect that water. So, again, I don't think it'd be a negative impact if we did all these improvements to doing future improvements for storm drain. That, it's just, it just may to be a necessary evil, but I don't, it's not going to, we're certainly going to have an inlet way in here in the middle of the trail. We're going to say, no, we can't impact the trail, we'll try to collect and do more inlets on the east side to collect where we can. But on any roads where if water's going through on this area, we may get private property owner permission to put an inlet in here or on this side, so we're collecting as it's going down into these private streets. And we're doing that on, on one of the storm drain projects now, where we're getting permission from the private road resident to put an inlet on their, on their street. And so it's, it's a cooperative process, so we'll try to grab the water wherever we can and not impact, because there are improvements that we've already spent money on. So I think we'll be okay.
Okay. Yeah, then I'm, I'm fine with doing the, the correct improvements, the, the full length.
Is there a...
You know, we, we don't see that, we'd have to tear it out in the near future.
Again, I don't think, think so, but again, it will ultimately come to where we have enough right-of-way. If it turns out that the only available space to do the storm drain is on the east, on the west side, yeah, then we may end up tearing out the trail fencing, but it gets put back in, part of the contract. And flood control would pay for that, because they, you had to do it. So that's a positive, is that we're not losing our money because of that. Flood control would fix it.
Okay. Thank you, Chad.
I would like to ask, on the second side, as far as trail fencing, it seems like we definitely want to do trail fencing, are we going to do it to the standard, which is six foot off road edge, or are we doing three foot? Which is currently now in a lot of the areas. I heard six foot was preferred, but I want to get a consensus if I could.
If you did six foot, what width of that trail will be? With, if you're leaving the trees there, what's the average width you're going to have?
The average width is, again, if we assume the tree is the boundary, it's going to be more like 10 to 8 in certain areas where the trees are at, because it's going to constrict. So, because...
You're being generous, I thought it would be like five or six.
And again, I haven't looked at every single area, but you, but in those areas where a tree's in the way, where it's that constricted, I would recommend we take out the tree.
Okay, that makes sense.
But I just want to make sure it's a where is a yes, because we're moving it six feet off, which is the standard. We have, because we have, we already determined, we have 18 feet, no problem, all the way through. So I can do that, say, look, I've got six here, 12 for the trail. It's just, will we get strict at different places? And in those specific areas, we'll do that selective, we've got to take this tree out to at least maintain a minimum of eight to 10.
Well, based upon Pedley there between, we're in front of Kevin's house, where they replaced that street from when they put the flood control, and they put it at, was it, that's not even three feet, is it? It's like two feet off, half that fence has been tore out by drivers and people driving through there. So I think you have to do six feet to protect the integrity of that fence.
I think so, I think it's better to keep it off the road.
That's just my opinion, how the council feels.
Following that, though, is, is there any desire about doing no parking along that whole segment to protect the trail fencing and people parking there? That will be, I, again, that is a residential issue, they may not, they may, people don't have parking, they may look to see that, why can't I use that? I just want to make sure that we're thinking about that, and I think it's a positive thing to protect what we're putting in. But it's a council directive as far as where we want to do no parking along that entire segment of California on that side of the road.
Craig?
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Kevin?
I mean, otherwise, this can, I'm just worried it becomes a passing lane in that six feet. So, no, I'm okay with the signage.
Chad, just curious, what's, what's the width of that road right now?
I don't have it with it, I'm not sure. Again, it's probably...
30 feet, if not?
It's probably a little bit more than that, but, because there's, there's a little more on the, on the east side. But again, it's a two-lane road, but there's a little extra space on the east side at this point. So I don't have those exact width.
Because you need eight feet for the car. You need eight feet for the car, but then each time comes back, you end up getting 10 feet, and then if a guy doesn't get close enough to it, you're going to end up, yeah, Eric's guy's going to be busy doing...
And my thought is, it's just signage, and we can certainly put it quite a bit up and along that. If it turns out afterwards, after six months, a year, that it becomes an issue for residents because of not being able to, because they're the ones immediately impacted as far as not being able to use that potential space to park a vehicle, we can always take the signs out.
Or designated a bike lane. Kevin, you have anything on that?
Mr. Mayor, one question, if you move that fence, if you set the fence out at six feet, now, are you going to be able to save most of those trees?
Yeah, most of the trees shouldn't be impacted. We're just going to selective move ones where it gets too constricted, like to six feet or four feet, we'll have to take out a tree.
But not all 47?
No, no, no. And I understand the directive, I'm too very, 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 very selective on what we remove.
Okay.
Has to be a very...
Kevin, do you have more?
So Crestview's going to be done May, I mean, beginning May, they go, go out the bid in May, June?
June, yes.
So they anticipate it'll be done in February of next year, is that what they've said?
Depending on rain delays or whatnot, I think they're looking to have it done certainly before next summer, but sometime in the new year.
And then what's the plan for the east side of California along, where you have the, the, the boxes and you have the storm, sort of storm trenches?
Closer to between six and seven?
Right. No, no, closer to, by 8th. 7th, 8th, on the east side, you've got those trenches, they've been there since I was a kid.
Oh, yeah, I, I think it...
My understanding is those are going to be removed, and they're going to put a storm drain system in there?
That is part of what we are doing as staff, not flood control, but we're developing projects for California. That's one of the areas we looked at. I'd have to verify if that is in this current project we're working on or not, but those are the things we're looking at, of trying to, again, put those into pipe and not have them surface, and take them to the next location. So unfortunately, I can't speak to whether I'm sure those are eliminated in this current project we're doing in California or not, I have to verify.
My question is, then, would it widen the street if you got rid of those?
No, we're, we're not changing the width of the street at all.
I'm just curious about that. And then, so, it's interesting, this is called California because one of the things we complain about is that Sacramento looks at California with cookie cutter eyes and I don't think you can do that with Norco. I think that that is actually, if you just sit back, and I can't control how people take care of their properties, but it's getting better. I can't knock on their door and be a property Nazi. But that's actually a really beautiful street. And I think one of the things we have to take into consideration for trails is every street is different. And I think that California is no exception. I think we need to look and see what we have and find ways to make that as enjoyable a riding trail as possible. I'm for the trail fencing, the white trail fencing. I am concerned because I actually have that exact situation where your trail is actually higher than your house. And so what we did was we built a berm. And then that way, when it would flood, before they put in the flood control system on Pedley, it used to come right over the top. So I think that that's something that you're going to have to go from property to property maybe and look to see if I build this trail above. So maybe you do make it below or maybe you do put berms in where you think that they're necessary. So the storm drain project, I like the idea of the Bobcat. I mean, the two properties that you want to kind of jig out, one, I want to find out, I mean, how the hell did they put in a concrete sidewalk in Norco on that street? How did that happen? I mean, it's so stupid, but maybe that was part of the craziness you referred to in which we took the property and we gave it all back. I don't know what happened there. But I also am wondering about the guy, that if there's some way, I mean, can we ask, say, hey, look, we'd like to keep the trail a straight shot and maybe find out he may, you know, be agreeable because it has been a trail since I was a kid. And the two trees that everybody rides through, I mean, even looking at things like that, I realize you probably have to cut it out, but even when you have something where you have two trees that you're riding through, that's a very unique aspect of that particular trail. I'm not saying you can save it, but my point is, I think that each of those, that kind of what is the setting that we're looking at? So for me, I think fill in the, fill in the trail with the materials that you need. I'm in favor of putting in the fencing. But again, I just think that every trail in Norco, as we look through this, I don't think we can stick to a certain standard. I think the standard, safety always prevails, but we, I think we need to look at every single trail and go, okay, this is how we can do this trail. We may not be able to keep the standard, but you're the one that said in your earlier report, maybe we have to have alternatives given the circumstance. I'm really happy we're finally doing this and I'd like to move on it as fast as possible. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Everyone, anything else?
No.
Robin, anything? All right. The one thing on the end, this goes back to probably Steve, is that as far as that, the Circle K, the old Circle K, it might be Javier or somebody could look at as a code case situation if they allow it to deteriorate, kind of like what we did down there with the, the old security. No, we fenced it off. It's an eyesore. Fence it off.
I was thinking the tall.
No, you know what? Maybe, you know, that way, if it's an eyesore, then we don't have to have people who are cutting through there. So, Chad, did you get enough for directions from us? What you need to get done?
Absolutely. I would like to verify, though, is there a support for us, whatever money that remains after this project is done, that we could do trail fencing on the items that we listed in the staff report?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. Does anybody have a problem with that? Nope.
Then I've definitely got direction. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Do you need a motion on this, Sheriff? Yeah, we're, only cut down the trees necessary to complete.
Action is so general that I'm not sure, I mean, you want to do that, but this motion covers anything you just directed him to do.
Oh, okay. Well, then I make a motion to approve this motion.
Have a second. I'll second it. We're going to hold you to this, Chad. Either that or Mr. Hamatry's going to hold you to it.
If the council would please vote. The motion passes unanimously.
All right, moving on to 6A, the appeal on site 201716, Beloza. Steve, that's yours?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is an item, that's an appeal. Planning Commission's approval for a 960 square foot large animal keeping shelter. It's located at 1336 Hill Kirk Lane. The building is partially constructed. A stop work order was issued because it was constructed without building permits. And one of the first step in coming into compliance with that violation is they have to seek approval from the planning commission per our new accessory use permit ordinance, accessory building use permit. The, and on February 14th, the planning commission voted to approve it. It wasn't unanimous. The vote was 4-1. The building meets all of the requirements of our new accessory building requirements with the exception of the setback standards. The new requirements are per the graduated setback requirement, which was adopted with the new regulations. And whereas the, the new requirement would be seven feet setback from the southwest corner and eight feet from the southeast corner. And the setback, the way the building is currently constructed is only five and a half feet provided on both sides. The, in meeting with staff, the applicant slash property owner asked if there was anything that could be done. And the only way around that is if there's a recorded PACA on the property, then similar to the Norco Ridge Ranch Pacific Plan, the graduated setback requirements are not required and it reverts back to the setback standards of five feet from side and rear property lines for interior lots. And the building does meet that setback requirement and the property, or the project, excuse me, was conditioned that a PACA be recorded prior to issuance of a building permit to finish the building. Other than that, the building meets all of the requirements. The architectural review committee didn't have any comments or recommendations. As I indicated, this is an appeal. So with that, the city council has three options. You can uphold the planning commission's approval, which only requires a roll call vote. You can uphold the planning commission approval and add changes to the project or to the resolution, which requires the adoption of a new resolution. And the third option is to overturn the planning commission's approval and deny the project and that only requires a roll call vote as well. There is a resolution for approval that matches the resolution that was adopted by the planning commission, if that's the direction that the city council chooses to go or change it, as I indicated. And there can be minor changes to that resolution of, again, if that's the direction of the city council. With that, I'll conclude my presentation and answer any questions.
Greg, starting down there with you.
I don't have any questions right now.
Kevin?
No questions.
Robin?
No questions.
Robin? Okay. This is too easy on you. Yeah, I know. Steve, you had a 4-1 vote on this and I know you keep copious notes and minutes. What was the dissenting vote?
It primarily is the fact that the penalties that we have for building without a permit is the, is only a doubling of the fees. And it's a general concept of the, one commission member is that that's not enough of a deterrent to stop illegal building and that we need to do more as, in terms of penalty. He did not agree with the idea of being able to record a PACA as a sort of a penance to get forgiveness in order to keep his building. And that was primarily it.
And regarding the setbacks and the discrepancies on measurements, did someone from your office actually physically measure the setbacks and the fencing requirements?
Yes. It was the senior planner, she went out and on both corners, she measured the closest distance between the fence and the building. And in both cases, it was over five feet.
Okay. Sheriff, do you have any cards on this?
Yes, Mayor, I have one card. Nellie Hatton.
Good evening, Nellie.
Good morning. Good evening, sorry. I'm a little nervous, sorry. As far as setbacks, that's, that's just not true. I've measured it. I am the adjacent property to that.
Until you got to talk to us.
Sorry, to the property. It is not, it's not even five feet. So from my fence line to the corner of the building, it's not even five feet. I know that I emailed all of the council members and I sent pictures to you guys. So I, you know, I know you know that that's what I've, what I've sent you. And as far as it being to code, as far as architecturally wise, their footings are not galvanized steel, there's no rust protection. It's already rusted. I can go out in the back right now, in my backyard, take pictures of it. It's already rusting. It's, it's just not to code, you know? And as far as them not having a building permit, that's one thing, but yeah, then they're just going to get a slap on the wrist to pay double the price and still be allowed to build a facility that is not to code, you know, and it's too close to my property. I'm not against horses. I have horses. I love horses. I'm glad that they want to have more horses. But it needs to be code. I mean, if I wanted to put, you know, I just bought that property from the city next door to me on Valley View and we had these strict deed restrictions that we were supposed to stick to, that we're supposed to stick to. And I know that if I went to build a building on that property, that you guys would come down on us. So it needs to be across the board, across all of the, all of the city. Everybody has to have the same standards. So that's, I'm going to use my three minutes, but, so I'm against, I'm against them to building it the way it needs to be torn down and needs to be started over and done to code. So.
Thank you. Do you have the cards?
No, that's all the cards.
All right, bringing it back to council. All right. Greg?
Okay. So, Steve, whenever you're ready to write, a measurement from a fence line doesn't mean anything, okay? Fence lines can vary in and out. So I would think at a point, it should be required of the applicant to have the property surveyed, find the property corners to determine where it is existing at this point. Anything within five feet, then I think the direction would be fairly simple is tear it down and remove it. But you just can't feel measure from a fence line. I do have one concern with the direction going with the PACAs, that the intent of the PACA was not to be, you know, a solution. The PACAs were to preserve animal keeping on new developments, lots, and to be used as almost a, well, this could work or a variance. Just have a little bit of heartburn with that, that we would use that as an instrument to do that. But if, if it is the majority opinion to do that on a PACA, the homeowner would make the deed restriction. Is it possible to add a condition that, if he can add a deed restriction, that he cannot remove the deed restriction in the future? Or is that a John question?
Well, they can't, I mean, it'd be in favor of, I mean, I guess that what you, I don't know if this will solve your problem or not, but it could be restricted to the extent that the city would have to concur in any movement or removal of the PACA.
Okay.
But as a practical matter, the property owner doesn't have the legal ability to go in and, the city would have to approve a revised map under any circumstances, whether there was a condition that the city approve or not. Functionally, the city has to approve.
To even add it.
Pardon me?
To add a deed restriction.
Well, the city has to approve with the PACA and the city has to approve any removal of the PACA. But if you want to make it clear in the conditions of approval, it's pretty easy to say that.
Okay. But like I said, Steve, I don't like it being used as a Band-Aid because that wasn't the intent of the animal keeping areas. So let's go just a little more to process that. The applicant has to come in, now submit engineered drawings, okay? And that's going to have to go through plan check. And then just that process of because of these drawings that were submitted to us are basically cartoons. We don't know until you see structural calculations on the footings, if the footings are the correct size, right? And then compaction, drainage. How will all those items be determined before you can even make a decision? So I was trying to think that out, that what I would, I would like to see is that we use our contract inspector. In this case, through Willdan. And not only is there double fees, obviously, for the permit and the building being built without permits, that the cost of the inspections, whatever that inspector requires to be uncovered, removed, et cetera, would be a fully borne additional cost instead of using our own staff. And then it, then I think at that point, you'd see where you're sitting with things. Or the other solution is tear it down and the setbacks go away if that addition was built on the other side of the existing barn. Since the property line runs out on diagonal, your setback would be growing and then the issue would go away. That's all I have for now.
Kevin, do you think?
Well, my thoughts run similar to Councilman Newton. Our municipal code is our contract. It's our contract with residents. And I think the days when you could kind of just build in Norco are gone. They, people now, they're not buying houses anymore for, you know, $100,000, $200,000. They're investing everything they have and they have certain expectations when you look at the contract of the municipal code. And that contract protects your views, it protects your animal keeping and has a lot of aspects to it. I totally agree that there needs to be a proper survey. I think that, I also totally agree that I went out, I measured it. I don't know where those other measurements came from. Part of the problem I have with Willdan is when I met with Willdan on another issue, I discovered that Willdan measures buildings differently than our own inspector measures buildings. That's not okay. One of the things that has to happen is, because we have a contract with the residents of the city of Norco, that we're all on the same page on how we measure heights of buildings, distances. distances from property lines, all kinds of things. Because one of the things that goes along with that contract is, as a resident, you can't sue the city in Norco, because it costs so much money that if, if somebody makes a mistake, you're screwed. In terms of the PACAs, quite honestly, my problem with PACAs has always been that a future council could say, moving forward, we're going to move forward, and now we'll enforce it this way, rather than look at what's written in the municipal code. So I don't have any faith that future councils may even protect those PACAs or even force people to do it. Two times fees, I also agree with Greg. All of us were all involved with the whole PACA thing, and to say, well, chief, if you put in a PACA, it's okay. I don't think the municipal code supports that, and I think we need to keep looking And in terms of, if this is upheld, I want a true inspection. I want to make sure that this is inspected exactly as it would be if it were new construction. That means if they've got to dig up their footings, if they have to, whatever they have to do, and I also, they got to prove to me the property line is where the property line is. Now, that's not normally something that we do, which I think is a mistake, but I think if somebody takes it upon themselves that they're going to build something outside the realm of a permitted structure, I think that at that point, they're obligated, that they need to make sure that they're building, that their property line and where their building is where they say it's going to be done. I know one of the comments from one of the commissioners was, we're not trying to be punitive. It's not punitive. We have a contract with the residents of Norco, who spend a lot of money to live here. And I think that anytime we deviate from that, particularly when it's knowingly, I think we are doing a true disservice to the residents of Norco. So you can kind of see where my feelings are going on that, and that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Berwin?
Excuse me, I agree with Councilman Newton on that. And I've been looking all weekend, yesterday and today, and I forgot to ask Alma. Did they put footings on here, on this addition? Because I couldn't find it anywhere in the report, Steve, that I might have missed.
Yes, they did. Now, based on the comments we've just heard, if it ultimately gets passed, what's going to have to happen is the inspector's going to have to be able to look at those footings to make sure they meet building code requirements, which means they're going to have to dig up and demonstrate what was constructed. But they did put in footings. Whether they meet code, I don't know.
Okay, and is this, is this a new barn, or is this a used one that they brought in?
The, I do not know that. I asked the senior planner that, and she was not sure about that either.
Because looking on the one picture exhibit C, the lower left-hand corner where it says south elevation, that wall there looks like it's covered with plastic. And then inside, excuse me, the, inside of the stalls, and the next picture over, it looks like two different types of material in there. Because most of those, most of those stalls that are made like that have a shiny metal material on the inside of them. You can get the outside of any color you want, like the, shows the tan, or white, whatever it is up there, but the inside is usually covered with a, with a shiny metal that keeps a horse kicking through the wall into the wood interior there. But besides that, I just wondered about the, about the footings. And there's no electrical in there, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Robin?
So an ad hoc committee spent months and months of time coming up with these accessory building rules, and then the council spent a lot of time coming up with accessory building rules. And I think they're probably the most equitable and fair as they could be, and I think we need to follow them. So at this point in time, my preference would be that the addition be taken down and a new permit taken out and put it where it needs to go.
The, as for the PACA, the reason that was set up for the hills with no setback is because they're terraced. That's why we did it. You've got a 10-foot elevation, some 8 to 10-feet elevation between some of those properties. And that's why the setback, it didn't make any sense, because if you put the setbacks in there for those higher properties, you couldn't build anything back in there. Even if you wanted a barn, you couldn't build a barn back there. So that's why we put for the PACAs, but that was generally deal with the hills. And I don't see using that as a way of getting this accomplished. That's, you're just circumventing why we did it in the first place. You're trying to make your rules up, you go along, and not the ones that was the spirit of the law. But I do, I do want to find out where the actual property line is. We have a discrepancy between neighbors. What the actual, one neighbor says is five foot, you say is five, and a tape measure says it's not five, it's four something. So, and, you know, I'm going to believe a tape measure, because that's what it is. It's what you do, you measure it. So measurement. So until somebody can prove to me where it was, I'm kind of like with Ms. Grumman, the building comes down. We have been dealing with that with accessory buildings, and that's why we put some teeth into it, and that's why we came up with what we did, so you wouldn't go through all these. And that's why we have a permit process, and that's what it's for. And people have to go in, say, hey, there's the rules. Those are the rules. There's the permit. So with that being said, I'll, somebody entertained, and...
Just one thing.
Okay.
Just maybe to go along with Berwin on the footings. And Stephen, and this is one of my concerns, and it's maybe just inadvertently, the way you answered Berwin when you said that, well, we can dig down and check the footings to make sure that they're to code. Well, there is no code to footings, okay? It's all based on structural calculations, and a lot of factors, including the building, are taken into that consideration. And when we have these cases, you don't have the structural calculations, because there's no permits involved, that once you go through that whole process, that's what I'm not trusting, is you'll have new calcs, and then really to check the size of those footings, you're not going to be able to, unless you completely excavate them all the way around and x-ray them to look for any reinforcing steel. So it gets to the point where Robin's suggestion is probably the most economical, and that's the one I support at this time, is take it down. No, I'm going to go with Robin's motion.
So, and I, no, I've made a motion.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Mayor Pro Tem?
Mayor, okay.
Your motion.
You know, and with that, with the, Brian just put up a building up at the park, why he's going to. And inspector was out there looking at compaction ratios for those footings and everything else like that, because of settling. We don't have any of that here. It's nothing. Unless you do compaction tests, you don't know what you're going to do. And Ms. Hatton doesn't want the building to slip off that footing into her property. So I think we owe it, that, I agree with you, Mr. Newton, is that we need to get engineers report, that's why we have them, that's why these things cost money. So if you want to entertain that motion, and, or Robin's motion, Robin, you want to make your motion?
Settle on that.
Yeah, you can do that. I know, you have choices.
That doesn't mean anything, Mr. Newton. I move that the building be removed, and the applicant can reapply to build an accessory building under our current codes.
Are you going to second that?
Second.
Okay. I have a first and a second?
That motion carries unanimously.
Okay. All right, going on, moving on to Hyattam 7, City Council, City Manager, Staff Communications. Actually, I'm going to start with Eric. Eric, can you, regarding some of the comments made earlier in public hearing?
Public comments.
Public comments, I'm sorry, the public comments. Can you touch on the sheriff's approach to, regarding the sanctuary city?
A city declaring itself, whether it's a sanctuary city or a non-sanuary city, does not change the way we apply the law. We enforce state statutes and criminal law, as well as local municipal codes and laws. So basically, the easiest answer is, we do not enforce immigration laws, or use department resources for immigration enforcement. That's it.
Thank you. All right, bringing it back here to the council table. Andy, do you have anything?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, we've had a lot of interesting discussion tonight with respect to trail maintenance standards. During Chad's presentation also on the trail improvements on California, he did point out that we have about $220,000 left in that fund, that will be entirely exhausted once that project and additional approved projects are implemented. We have this issue not just for trail, we have similar issues with city streets, we have the same issues with public facilities, our buildings and park improvements. As a result of the situation we are, we are going to be having a city council study session on April 4th, starting at 4 o'clock in the afternoon, to take a look at our financial position with respect to our infrastructure needs over the next 20 years. Similarly, we are also going to be taking a 10-year outlook on our city's operating fund, precisely the general fund, to see where we are based on what we have today, where we are going to be in the next 10 years or so. That's going to be an interesting discussion. I encourage everybody to come in and participate in that discussion, because it's expected to lead into bigger discussions that the city should be having over the coming months.
Thank you. Robin? Berwin?
Yes, sir, I've had a lot of emails today, and a couple yesterday, then we had a gentleman tonight that wanted us to agendize the sanctuary city business, have a discussion on it, and decide what we want to do about it. So I'd like to agendize that, if we can, for a future council meeting. Do I need to make that a motion, or?
You want, yeah, you can, if you want.
I'll make it a motion that we agendized to discuss the sanctuary city.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that, but under discussion. I'd like to ask you to reconsider the timing involved, and situations that we're dealing with as far as districting and the other pressures at this time.
I have no problem with that. The reason I've done this is because citizens have sent in emails requesting it, and I'm doing that because I figure that they elected us to serve them, so I'm trying to show that we do listen to them.
And I agree with that, and I did talk to the city clerk about that today also, as I'm sure we all received those same volume of emails.
And I have no problem, you know, with what you say. We do have a problem we're dealing with on the districting and everything, and this, I don't know how, how people, or how that person will consider, will think of us. I mean, we're dealing with him on districting, and then if we come up with this sanctuary city, but it's just how it's going to look to him. But I did want the public to know that I did make a motion to bring that up tonight.
And in terms of timing, regardless, you might want to think about, Los Alamos obviously passed their ordinance, that's going to generate some legal interest. Orange County Board of Supervisors has it on their agenda, whether it passes or not. I would expect that the state attorney general is going to try and make an example of somebody, and it might not hurt to wait for a little bit to see what the response is legally, rather than kind of buying litigation.
Well, like I said, I have no problem doing that, so you just, I said that a future meeting, I didn't say next week or week after next, so decide what you want to do.
I mean, as a, as a practical matter, the, anything that this city does, or for that matter, Los Alamitos, is more a philosophical statement than anything else. The sheriff's department is our police department, and the sheriff's departments can do what the sheriff's department does. Same thing with the Orange County Sheriff's Department, which represents Los Alamitos. The cities don't, whether we like it or not, have the ability to opt out of statutes we don't like. I mean, and, you know, a lot of things maybe not to like about it, but if that, we would opt out of the redevelopment dissolution statute, but couldn't do that either.
So I have a first and a second, and discussion.
One of the things, maybe consider bringing this back after we get our study done, our demographic study, and that's due when, Andy?
We expect to have, that may not be the end of it, and there may be some additions. Council has a point too. System we're going to have.
So if we did it something in June, pretty much we'll be clear of most of this situation.
Either the second meeting in May.
Is it possible to table the motion and bring it back in June, Berwin? And I totally understand where you're coming from.
I don't see that there's any deadline on changing from a sanctuary city to a non-sanuary city. I just told the people that I would bring this up tonight for discussion and put it on a future agenda. I didn't say what agenda, so June is a future agenda. I just wanted to let them know that we did bring it up and discuss it. If it don't pass now, we can try it again later, after we get through this district and stuff.
You got it. All right, so we have a first and a second, and probably agendizes in June?
How about to just no certain date?
In a future?
Future date.
Future day is fine. We'll leave it open.
You okay with that, Berwin?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I didn't.
All right.
And on your motion, obviously, nor do they have any comments that make it a decision having been made, or making it clear that you want to, quote, opt out, but rather, since it's...
A future discussion.
Yes, it's just discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, and like you said, John, they may be, the state attorney general may, in the meantime, come down hard on some of those other cities that's going to do this, and maybe by June or something. We don't want to, but at least we're going to have it on a future agenda for discussion, because there's no deadline when we have to do it.
In addition, as you all know, I presume, that there is federal litigation already, that the Department of, the US Department of Justice has filed suit against the state of California to invalidate... of California to invalidate the statute. So, I mean, there are so many moving situations that we're, Norco might be better off waiting and seeing at least a little bit longer about what happened before discussing it and making a determination that may be found to be invalid in the future or unnecessary.
I think Berwin's list is too short. We ought to just take it all, huh?
Okay.
List everything that's wrong, okay?
Well, how about the, let's opt out of the housing bills.
Yeah. So, and so Cheryl can go home because we're keeping her here because she's sick, is the motion is to agendize this for a future meeting.
Okay, verbal roll call vote. Council members Newton?
Yes.
Bash?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grunmeyer?
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes.
That motion carries.
All right, going back over here. Kevin, do you have anything? Greg?
Just one more thing. The item that I brought up, that we pulled on the consent calendar on the planning commission on that lot split, but my concerns were on the stormwater management that Chad's going to look into, would you also add, please, the mining operation at First and Temeskill that is in the same violation as these properties on Hamner? And could you report that back to council, please? Thank you.
Cheryl, start over there.
Again, just a reminder, State of the City address is next week, Thursday, March 29th, Silver Lakes, the Field House, second floor of the Field House Restaurant at Silver Lakes. Doors open at 6:00, the address is at 7:00, and this is a good opportunity for residents, business persons and community organizations to gather and hear on the mayor's address, which will focus on the city's legacy of vision in the city. Thank you.
Matt? I'm going to say Chad because you guys switched nameplates, aren't you? What are you trying to do here? Steve, do you have anything? No, Chad?
I just want to thank the council again tonight for bearing with all these items, but they've been a long time coming and they will help department-wise really improve what we do in the direction. So I do thank you and the STUC committee and the staff who all worked very hard on all these items. So I appreciate your patience and it'll be, it's all positive set forward in my opinion. So I thank you.
Yeah, good job. Good PowerPoint presentation. I like the toys. Okay. Brian?
Just a reminder, for the March 24th event, our Welcome Home Troops program that starts at 4:00 and then later on is the Norco 50th Anniversary Celebration. And for the public, there are flyers on the, outside the door.
Thank you. Gina?
Yes, briefly, on March 13th, the city closed the refunding of the Norco Community Facilities District number 97-1 Norco Hills. And the savings to residents in that area, homeowners, is about between $343 and $454 per parcel, depending on the lot size. So it was a fantastic opportunity for us and as you know, interest rates just went up. So it's, you'll see another press release coming out on this.
Good. Scott? No buzzer went off. Eric, anything else from you guys?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. For tomorrow night, rule meeting, if you're interested in the Cap Rock project, it'll be at Sixth Street Deli, what time?
7:00.
7:00. All right. Adhere.